Good morning, everyone. Today is October 11th, 2022. I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Select Budget Committee. The meeting will come to order. The time is 9:33 a.m. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Peterson?
Present.
Councilmember Sawant?
Present.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Herbold?
Here.
Councilmember Juarez?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
And Chair Mosqueta?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for joining us today, the first of four days in Week Three of the budget. Today, we will have an opportunity to dive into the fundamentals of the budget with our Deputy Director, Ali Panucci, and our Director, Esther Handy from Central Staff. This will be followed by a presentation on the General Fund Balancing and Related Fund Policies from Central Staff members, including Tom Meisel and Ali Panucci. Colleagues, this is the beginning of four days that allows for us to really understand what the proposed budget from the mayor is, get into some specific questions on certain departments, and really analyze more about options or issues that the Central Staff have identified. Before we can get into department presentations, though, it's important for us to have a fundamental understanding of the shifts, the changes, and the proposed use of our various revenue streams before we even begin discussing investments. So I look forward to having this foundational discussion today, really allowing for us to get into the content of how the budget was shaped before we talk about some of the expenses that will be discussed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. So colleagues, today, those are the two main items on our agenda, and before we begin with those, I've also included in the Chair's report a report from Dr. Khan, the Director of the Seattle Public Health, Seattle-King County, who is here to give us a brief update on COVID infections and other infectious diseases in our region. If there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. I'm very excited that we have with us the newly appointed Public Health Director. Thank you so much for being with us, Dr. Khan. Really excited to have you back in Seattle City Council chambers, thanks to Council Member Herbold, who oversaw the appointment process that was jointly done between Seattle and King County. We now have the opportunity to hear directly from you about the current status of COVID. There's been much conversation about the pandemic being over. I started my remarks on the first day of the budget season, emphasizing the points from local reporters, health reporters, about how the pandemic is clearly not over. With 200 to 300 deaths a day still occurring across this country, we want to make sure that we're recognizing the hardship, stress, and trauma that those families are currently enduring, and also remind folks why we are here, asking for folks to remain masked, practice social distancing every time it's possible, and encouraging a hybrid approach to these meetings. So, Dr. Khan, as part of my opening comments, I'd like to turn it over to you to really provide us with a status update so we can know better how to protect our community, protect ourselves, our family, and our local economy. Thank you, Dr. Khan, for being with us.
Thank you, Councilmembers Mosqueta. Thank you, Councilmembers, for this opportunity. I'd like to begin by providing a brief update on the status of COVID-19 and the stage of the pandemic that we find ourselves in today. There is cause for cautious optimism, but I underline the word cautious. All that progress that we've made over the last five to six months will be reversed very quickly if we do not continue to exercise the universal precautions that Councilmember Mosqueta just referenced. The wearing of masks, social distancing, and, of course, completion of the vaccination series, including boosters, yes, including the bivalent COVID, the bivalent Omicron booster, as well as the seasonal influenza shot that is now readily available across the region, are critical in trying to prevent what is anticipated to be a moderate-to-severe influenza season, as well as the next surge in COVID infections. Hopefully, the peak of this surge, which is inevitable, will be barely palpable in terms of comparison to previous surges. And we can get to that point only by ensuring that the most vulnerable, the most likely to end up with severe ramifications are protected around us. Our efforts right now are concentrated around encouraging universal precautions as we enter the regular influenza season and while COVID remains a threat, by encouraging vaccinations and booster shot updates. At the moment, just about 10% of the population in the Seattle-King County region has taken up the COVID booster. That is nowhere near enough. That is nowhere close to where we ought to be. And so that's what our efforts as a public health agency are going to be focused on. Our hospital systems are already overburdened and stressed out, not the least of which is financial stress that they've experienced cumulatively throughout the pandemic. Just this week, Harborview Medical Center had to institute some emergency precautions as a result of being overwhelmed by the number of patients they were seeing due to non-COVID-related issues. You can imagine what would happen if another surge were to hit us today. The future remains uncertain, and I know that sounds terribly cliched at this point in the pandemic, but regrettably, that is where we are. We simply don't know what the next three to six months will hold. I remind everyone to keep an eye on what is happening in Europe as they enter their fall and winter season, and they begin to see a surge in COVID-19-related illness. The same will play out on the eastern seaboard, and it will make its way to the western seaboard. Yet that is inevitable due to the hyperconnected world we live in. Please also keep an eye on the experiences of our public health colleagues in the New York City region. They are dealing with a quadruple threat related to COVID-19, influenza, measles, and polio. Yes, those familiar old enemies are making another appearance. Our public health workforce across the country, including the Seattle-King County region, is already exhausted in dealing with the pandemic over the last two and a half years. So we need everyone to work together, accept a sense of personal responsibility in exercising common sense precautions as they go about their normal business. As we enter fall and winter, it is even more important to wear a mask and be watchful of those around us, to protect those that are most vulnerable in our inner circles and our circle of friends and family. Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta.
Thank you very much, Dr. Khan. And for these reasons, we continue to promote a hybrid option and encourage remote participation. I want to thank every single person who's in the room today. The few folks that are with us do have masks on, so I thank you for that, and thanks to everyone who continues to participate remotely as well. Are there any questions for Dr. Khan today? Okay, should raise a big question for all of us, that only 10% of the population currently has its booster. If you have not been boosted, please get your booster. Get your flu vaccine as well as we head into the fall/winter season. It is very concerning, as Dr. Khan illuminated, to see what is occurring on the East Coast and to know that it's a simple five-hour flight from the East Coast to the West Coast, and many of these communicable diseases spread very quickly. So, Dr. Khan, we're at the ready and look forward to continuing to help you address the multifaceted challenges that public health is facing with increased communicable disease, decades of underfunding of public health. And I want to also appreciate all that you have brought to your new leadership position. We are very thankful for the team at Public Health Seattle-King County for being on the cutting edge of the pandemic response and other strategies to protect our public's health. So this is one of the forums that I hope will continue to get the message out to the general public that the pandemic is not over, and for these reasons, please continue to respect social distancing, the use of masks as a protection strategy, and get your boosters. All right. Thank you, Dr. Khan. We will look for any way we can to amplify the messages from public health in the upcoming months. Take care. Colleagues, just to wrap up our discussion here for the Chair's remarks, I want to note a few things coming up for this week, and then we'll move into public comment. As we know, the last couple of years have been very tough budget years, and they would have been made much worse had it not been for the federal investments of American Rescue Plan and Clifford Relief Funds, also from our very own investment as a city, as a city council, to spearhead Jump Start Progressive Revenue, the payroll tax, payroll expense tax. This has helped to stop deep cuts to the city and to our region, helped to support small businesses and our most vulnerable. And as federal dollars go away, what we want to do is to make sure that these tough budget decisions are still rooted in the values that we, as a council, have prioritized: investing in our most vulnerable, making sure that people have housing and housing is being built in the pipeline, making sure that those who need supportive services are able to receive those by a stable workforce that invests in wages and inflationary adjustments, by making sure that we're investing in the health and safety of our community, both in terms of infrastructure safety, but also public community safety and the health and well-being of folks, not just responding to COVID, but preventative efforts like making sure people have food and diaper services, protection from domestic violence. And lastly, that we invest in our economy and create a stable economy by creating workforce investment opportunities, training for local workers, and support for our smallest businesses as folks either seek to reopen doors or struggle to keep their doors open in the wake of COVID. We walked into this budget season with $141 million in operating budget deficit for 2023 and $152 million in 2024. But I don't think those numbers show the full picture of the challenge in front of us. It's not just how we close that gap, it's how we write our budget. It's how we make sure that our investments that we codified into statute stay true to those investments and that we create stability in future years, not short-term Band-Aid solutions that will actually create a wake of hardship in the future. We're going to walk through a Central Staff memo today that helps underscore not just the concerns with the $141 million operating deficit for this upcoming year, but will help us understand better the proposed budget in terms of investments, opportunities for the next two years, and some of the challenges and concerns that it outlines for the next six years. Well, the budget that's transmitted does some tough work to balance '23 and '24, as we will see today. They arrive there by diverting general fund adjacent revenues, ending one-time investments, but adding ongoing investments to the tune of nearly $60 million over two years, and making potential greater gaps in the deficit for 2025 and beyond. We've known this is coming. We've been working with Central Staff, the mayor's office, the city budgets office, to try to identify greater efficiencies in terms of policy strategies so we get real-time reporting on where we can do better budgeting within departments. We've looked at ways to leverage state and federal dollars, and will continue to do so throughout our budgeting process over the next six weeks and over the next six years. And we will continue to push for progressive revenue, progressive revenue to stabilize this gap that we continue to see. The Progressive Revenue Stabilization Work Group has been identified. The mayor's office has sent around a note to all council members today informing them of the process, and we must secure additional progressive revenue to stem the, to address the concerns that are outlined in the budget memo that we will review today. So look forward to those conversations throughout, with you all, throughout the next six weeks so that we can create a greater stability over the next six years. Colleagues, again, the Central Staff memo that was circulated outlined what the process is going to be over the next four days, and I'll quickly summarize it. It was in our Week Three budget roundup as well that we sent yesterday. Today is dedicated to Central Staff introduction, general fund-related fund policies. This afternoon, after our 1 o'clock break beginning at 2 o'clock, we will look at the balancing strategies and related fund policies that will include Jump Start, TNC tax, short-term rental tax, and other strategies to try to address the gap this year. We will break around 4:00 p.m. today so that we can have a public hearing for folks who want to participate in that public hearing. Wednesday will be Office of Planning Community Development, Department of Neighborhoods, Office of Economic Development in the morning, and in the afternoon, starting at 2:00 p.m., Office of Housing and Miscellaneous Issues. On Thursday, Day Three, at 9:30, we will have the Department of Transportation and the proposed transfer of the parking enforcement officers from SDOT to SPD. We'll take a break at 1:00 p.m., and when we reconvene at 2:00 p.m., we will cover the Seattle Police Department and the Community Safety and Communications Center, the new department that council created two years ago. And finally, on Day Four, we'll begin our day with the Human Services Department. This will include funding for homeless services that are remaining at HSD, and then we will have an overview of encampment cleanup and garbage cleanup in the mayor's proposed budget. We will break at 2:00 p.m. and conclude our day with parks and any overflow topics as needed. All of these days, we seek to end the public hearing at 5:00 p.m. We will start at 9:30 a.m., but only today are we doing a condensed public comment period. So with that, I know there's people eagerly waiting to testify in public. I do have one person only signed up in person, so, okay, two people, great. I think I'll just go ahead and do the two people that are in person and then go to the folks on the room, on the call. What we are going to do normally is we are going to have difference to the people who are dialing in remotely, but this morning, I'll go ahead and do the folks in the room, and then we'll go to the people on the line. So we do have three people, excuse me, yes, now three people signed up in public comment. The first one will be Patrick Dunn, followed by Peter Cruel and Matthew Sutherland. Good morning, Patrick. Please make your way to the podium.
Morning, Councilmembers.
Morning. You're welcome to go ahead. I just want to confirm your microphone is on.
Thank you.
One second. Let me just confirm it's on. Can you all hear him online?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's better. Go ahead.
My name is Patrick Dunn. I'm a 26-year Seattle firefighter veteran and a longtime resident of District One. I'm here to speak in favor of funding of Ladder Shuck 13 and Medic 26 in support of Councilwoman Herbold's efforts to continue the funding. There are many different differences between engines and ladder trucks and medic units and aid cars, not all as which known, and I can detail some of these in a letter that I'll leave without going into specific details. But I want to point out, in the area of West Seattle, the southern portion is nicknamed "The Dead Zone." Years ago, there was a plan to add a fire station after the city of Seattle absorbed the most southern part of West Seattle. This plan never came to fruition, and the additional real estate has resulted in the longest response times in the city and timeframes that exceed the survival window for CPR and other life-threatening events. The workload and number of 911 calls in the city has grown steadily, and the addition of resources has lagged beyond the city's growth. When an event is happening that requires additional resources, 911 dispatchers move available fire engines and trucks strategically throughout the city to maintain coverage. When a fire apparatus is added to any district, it helps all districts. Medic 26 serves South Park and responds second in to Rainier Valley. Both are historically economically disadvantaged areas and tend to have a greater demand for 911 services. Ladder 13 and Medic 26 are in place and working right now. The ramp-up work has already been done. Seattle is a leader in the fire service worldwide, and I'm asking the council to please continue the funding for Ladder 13 and Medic 26. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And you modeled really great timing. I forgot to mention, folks have two minutes today, so thank you for staying under that time, and we'd be happy to receive any written materials you have. Thanks. Thanks for your testimony. Peter Cruel, followed by Matthew. Good morning, Peter.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Budget Chair Mosqueta. My name is Peter Cruel. I'm President of Driver Union, which represents thousands of over-unleashed drivers who work in Seattle. I'm here to ask City Council to preserve fair share tax for a designated purpose, including, including fun. Funding the offers of labor standard, as well as housing and transit priority. Only two years ago, an incredible diverse coalition of more than 65 organizations came together behind a fair share plan. The plan is funded by a tax on over-unleashed rights. This tax makes investment in three areas: affordable housing near transit, transportation option, including the streetcar and protection for vulnerable gig workers. The offers of labor standard is responsible for imposing more than dozen law, including a new pay standard for gig workers who deliberately, these are often the same workers who drive from over-unleashed. The offers of labor standard need continued funding from the fair share tax to protect these gig workers. The fair share tax will not pass without our collusion support. Yet although this priority remains essential to all of us, the purpose budget diverts this tax revenue from its dedicated purpose and into the general fund. We are calling on the City Council to respect the intent of the fair share tax and maintain this funding for affordable housing, transportation option, and labor standard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here, Mr. President. And the last person in person is Matthew. Good morning, Matthew.
Good morning, Chair Mosqueta. You know, my mom's always complained about my handwriting, but it's Matthew Sutherland. I'm the advocacy director at Transportation Choices. I don't blame you for not being able to read the handwriting. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the 2023 Seattle City Budget. We'd like to thank you for investing into Vision Zero. As people biking and walking face higher rates of injury and death, this is an important investment for public safety. We also appreciate the investment in transportation equity programs, the Move Seattle Levy projects, and commitments to public engagement for the Seattle Transportation Plan. We're grateful that the City Center Seattle Streetcar received some attention. However, we think urgent action is required that actually breaks ground, or frankly, this project will not be completed as the city looks to balance priorities in the future in preparation for the 2026 World Cup. Concern to us and many other organizations, and as our colleague Peter mentioned from the Drivers Union today, we're concerned about the use of the fair share tax for purposes other than what was intended and promised. 65 organizations work to make a tax on TNCs that would be invested specifically in affordable housing, completing the streetcar and protections for vulnerable workers. These funds should not move back to the general fund. These funds should be dedicated to projects that were promised to fund. Without a dedicated funding source, we know these projects will fall by the wayside. Affordable housing, multimodal transportation options, and labor protections are critical to a livable, equitable, and sustainable city. We ask that you take more time to solve general operating budget issues without sacrificing the fair share promises. Budgets reflect our values, and we don't want to see these values left behind. So thank you for your continuous thoughtfulness in a difficult budget process. We're grateful for the leadership and opportunity to provide comments. So thank you, Budget Chair Mosqueta and other councilmembers for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, wonderful. Well, thanks all for your public comment. And we are going to turn to the people who are waiting patiently online. I can read these handwritings really well because it was typed in here. So Howard Gale, followed by Peter Conda and BJ Last. Everyone, you know the drill. Once you hear your name called, please do hit star six on your own phone. Make sure your phone is unmuted. You'll hear a chime at 10 seconds when your time is about to run out. Please do wrap up your public comment and send in any remaining comments to council@seattle.gov. With that, good morning, Howard. Thanks for getting us started.
Good morning. It's Howard Gale, District Seven, with seattlestop.org. Next year's budget proposes more money for the police and wastes over $11 million in a police accountability system that still has police investigating police. This is $11 million spent denying victims of police violence, any appeals, or any semblance of justice or accountability. This budget provides for more monies for victims of violence unless that violence is perpetrated by a Seattle police officer. This budget provides monies to stem gun violence unless that violence is perpetrated by a Seattle police officer. This bias embedded in the budget is embedded throughout our public safety system. Seattle police do not even count police killings as homicides in their homicide data, though King County and other entities, of course, do. Why exclude only the victims of police violence from city support? Why defend and support those that perpetrate the violence when they are police but deny their victims and their families support? Our current accountability systems are not assisting victims with navigating a flawed system more designed to protect police officers as opposed to holding them accountable. Victims' complaints are lost in bureaucracy and dismissed the vast majority of the time without any process or even a right of appeal, despite the fact that there's a city law mandating such a process for five years now. We need a budget that serves people, especially those injured by how you spend your tax money, those people injured by police, and not the interests of those that perpetrate the violence. We need a fund to support victims of police violence and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Peter, good morning, Peter. Good to see you again, followed by BJ Last.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. This is Peter Condon, District Six, speaking about the Seattle Police Department's budget. The SPD should not be allowed to receive funding for more officers than they have staffed. In each of the past three years, SPD's hiring plans have anticipated net growth of about 25 or 30 officers. Instead, voluntary separations have led to a net reduction of 260 fully-trained officers since June 2020. Dollars from higher-than-expected attrition throughout the year, or salary savings, and dollars from FTEs the department never planned to fill in the first place, ghost positions, are allowed by default to stay within the department, where they might be spent on weapons, bonuses, and problematic surveillance equipment such as ShotSpotter. It's time for Seattle to budget for a shrinking police department. Council needs to take proactive steps to move functions, responsibilities, and budgets out of the SPD. Council needs to defund SPD's empty positions and abrogate unfilled FTEs so that we can permanently invest in true public safety: housing, jobs, education, healthcare, and community programs. We've already seen a reduction in calls to SPD in the past two years. Moreover, many calls are still superfluous and are initiated by officers themselves. According to Page 12 of the SPD Call Analysis, completed by the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, these so-called "on-view" events make up more than a third of the department's calls. The most common on-view event is a simple premise check, which has an arrest rate of less than 1 in 1,000. This is self-dealing. If an officer is having a slow day, there's nothing to stop them from just registering their time as a premise check. SPD's inflated staffing plans and unaccountable budget go hand-in-hand with systemic racism, violence, and anti-democratic norms. Deliberately reducing the size and scope of the police force today is a commitment to the long-term transformational change that most of you acknowledged just two years ago is necessary to produce true public safety without police violence. Defund SPD. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. And BJ, followed by Castile High Tower. Good morning, BJ.
Good morning. My name is BJ Last. I'm a Ballard resident and small business owner. I support the solidarity budget. Mayor's proposed budget fails the people of Seattle. It defunds Jump Start next year, with 28% of next year's Jump Start funds going to the general fund instead of Jump Start's priorities. This is taking money from housing, Green New Deal, economic development, and equitable development and economic revitalization. Of the $95 million of Jump Start going to the general fund, over $22 million of that will go to the Seattle Police Department, since Seattle Police Department eats up roughly a quarter of the general fund. And that is before we add in the courts and the cost of incarcerating people. At the same time, the budget allows SPD to keep $17 million of so-called salary savings for positions it has no plans or ability to fill to use as a slush fund for other items. We should not be defunding housing to give SPD a slush fund of salary savings, and we should be abrogating positions SPD has no plans to fill instead of letting them be the one department that gets to constantly budget for more positions than they plan on filling. Additionally, the budget cuts the pay of homeless service providers by making their pay adjustment lower than inflation while giving hiring and retention bonuses to SPD. SPD officers already make more than twice as much as homeless service providers. This is cutting the pay of low-paid workers to give bonuses to highly-paid employees. More than that, it's defunding people who can support our unsheltered neighbors and can help get them sheltered in order to give money for cops to endlessly sweep people who have nowhere to go. Combined with defunding housing by moving Jump Start to the general fund, this budget is a homelessness policy of sweeps instead of housing and services. Additionally, SPD's request for $1 million of weapons should also be reallocated to homeless service provider pay since SPD is double-dipping with this request. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. The next person is Castile, followed by Alice Lockhart. Good morning, Castile.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
In 2004, my brother Herbert Hightower Jr. was shot and killed by Seattle police while he was experiencing a mental health crisis. No one was held accountable, and we are still fighting for justice and accountability. When he was killed, we received little to no support and still continue to struggle as a direct result of his killing against a hostile system that pours millions into justifying my brother's murder and so many like his while providing no resources to victims and families except a broken accountability system designed to protect police officers instead of actually holding them accountable, regularly loses victim complaints. What complaints do get through are almost always dismissed or minimized and without any process or right of appeal. And unfortunately, our story is not unique. This city touts that it has a more obligation to victims of violence, but when the victimizes are police officers, you allow a double standard. It is only right to create resources specifically for victims of police violence and the surviving family members during next year's budget. We should not be left at the mercy of a broken accountability system and zero and zero resources just because our trauma, our harm, and our loss bloodied the hands of SPD. We demand support, we demand accountability, and we demand to be included in this budget. Justice for Herbert Hightower Jr. and justice for all victims of police violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much for dialing in again. Alice, followed by Penny O'Grady. Good morning, Alice.
Good morning, Budget Committee. Thanks for this opportunity to comment. I'm Alice Lockhart, and I volunteer with 350 Seattle and Solidarity Budget. I've dug into just the top level of Mayor Harold's budget proposal, but it takes me back to this past August when Budget Chair Mosqueta pointed out that if we over-rely on Jumpstart now and the revenue forecast worsens in November, we will have an unstable and unsustainable budget. The mayor's budget proposal to raid Jumpstart funds is inhumane, unsustainable, and unnecessary. Transferring Jumpstart surplus to the general fund to prevent cuts in critical service, city services on which we all rely makes sense. But the mayor's proposal to raid Jumpstart by an additional $22 million in 2023 compromises already long-delayed Jumpstart investments in housing, small businesses, Green New Deal, and Equitable Development Initiative. Moreover, taking a look at the mayor's--
Alice, we just lost you. Oh, okay. Alice, hold on one second. We got another minute and three seconds for you on the clock.
Sorry about that. Zoom suddenly muted me. I don't get it.
That took me-- I think it was-- No problem. Alice, we just want to make sure to get you back to your original time. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Moreover, taking a look at the mayor's top-line expenditure survey, I see that he prioritizes policing and his own office over real public safety. SPD gets an increase of 5.7%, while Office of Labor Standards takes a 35% cut. This feels like basically legalizing wage theft. The Fire Department takes a cut, as does the Office of Emergency Management, while the mayor's own office gets a 36% raise. I hope council will work with community to find changes to this budget that will protect Jumpstart and real community safety while keeping the promise to cut excessive spending at SPD. I trust community, council, central staff, and this committee to remove the harm in the mayor's budget and preserve spending that allows us all to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Penny, followed by John Grant. Good morning, Penny.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for your work. I live in District Six. I am speaking in full support of the Solidarity Budget. I urge you to use all Jumpstart money to invest in its intended purpose for housing and food security, investing in communities of color, small businesses, and community health. The more Seattle invests in healing harms from the wounds of racial and social oppressions and invests in basic human needs, the safer we are collectively. The more the city invests in creating harm and trauma, the less safe we are. Instead of taking funds away from Jumpstart to make the budget work, take funds from the punishment systems that disproportionately harm our Black and Indigenous residents. Take funds from SPD, Seattle Municipal Court, and the city attorney. In the context of a budget shortfall and a desperate need for affordable housing and mental health crisis response, funding positions that SPD has no way of filling is not just government waste. It is a refusal to address the safety needs of Seattle residents. Instead of funding the proven ineffective ShotSpotter, invest in real community safety solutions, such as scaling of violence interruption programs to address increases in community violence. In this context, it is outrageous to consider any pay cuts to human service workers proposed in Mayor Harold's budget. Where police officers are being offered recruitment and retention packages, this legislation is a slap in the face. If we are serious about ending homelessness, we need to pay human service workers more, not less. I support the Solidarity Budget's pay increases and retention bonuses for human service providers and all the other pieces of the Solidarity Budget which I know you've received. Thank you for listening. I saved my time.
Thank you so much. Next up is John Grant, followed by Thomasina Schmidt. Good morning, John. And John, just star six to unmute.
Morning, Chair Mosqueta and committee members. My name is John Grant, and I am the Chief Strategy Officer for the Low-Income Housing Institute. I'm testifying today to bring to your attention critical revisions for the budget for the tiny house village program. First, I want to thank the mayor for making important investments in RV safe lots and adding new funding for additional tiny house villages and ask the council to retain those proposals. Lehigh is requesting a much-needed $2.8 million investment to sustain the existing portfolio of 11 tiny house villages at Edden Lake Front Shelter. $276,000 will go towards one-time maintenance and repairs at all the sites to replace damaged tiny houses, aging kitchen facilities, and other items that are at the end of their useful life. Last year, this body supported Councilmember Lewis's proposal to add funding for behavioral health staffing to address the rise of opioid and fentanyl addiction as well as support mental health counseling at our villages. This investment was made with one-time funds, but has been crucial to ensure that we break and get people housed. $880,000 would go towards maintaining substance use disorder and mental health support at all of our sites. As the city has ramped up its removals of homeless encampments, we are seeing much higher acuity program participants. As a result, Lehigh increased our 24/7 staffed sites to ensure the safety of our program participants, the safety of our staff, and the safety of the surrounding community. This expense is directly related to the higher acuity Hope Team referrals from the city, but we have not received additional funding. Therefore, we are asking for increases to our ongoing 24/7 staffing support in the 2023 budget. Finally, the city council has increased funding this year to address food insecurity at some of our sites, and we ask you to please continue full funding for Operation Stack Lunch. In total, these requests come out to $2.8 million and are absolutely necessary to maintain our existing capacity at our villages. Please support the tiny house village program, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Thomasina, followed by Julia Buck. Good morning, Thomasina.
Good morning. My name is Thomasina Schmidt, and I'm the Executive Director for Seattle Neighborhood Group, a local nonprofit focused on community safety and crime prevention. We have two funding requests for the 2023-2024 city budget. First, we'd like to ask the council to restore a proposed funding cut to our Safe Communities contract. Second, we'd like to ask for increased funding for our Rainier Beach: A Beautiful Safe Place for Youth contract. We have held both contracts with the city for over a decade. Both contracts are community-led, place-based violence and crime prevention programs that have been researched and evaluated by professional criminologists working in various universities in the United States. These programs have made significant impact in the community and have helped with reducing violence and crime. The city council has stated that one of their priorities is to advance the reimagining of policing with a larger civilian response. The Safe Communities and Rainier Beach: A Beautiful Safe Place for Youth contracts help to achieve this goal. We understand that this is a difficult economic climate and that the city is facing a revenue shortfall. Considering this shortfall, we have serious concerns about the proposed spending of $1 million for a gunfire detection system. With dollars being limited, it makes sense to put the money into community-led solutions that have been working for years. Instead of investing in questionable technology to increase public safety, we propose investing in community-led programs that are already doing this work, such as Safe Communities and Rainier Beach: A Beautiful Safe Place for Youth. We thank you for your ongoing support and consideration. I yield my time.
Thank you so much. The next person is Julia, followed by Amanda Daniels. Good morning, Julia.
Good morning, council. My name is Julia Buck. I'm a legislator in District Six, and I'm calling in support of the Solidarity Budget. The mayor's proposed a budget that's going to raid Green New Deal dollars that are meant to be focused on frontline neighborhoods. First, to fill budget holes for programs that are based in wealthy neighborhoods in the North End who are better equipped to withstand the climate crisis. He has also proposed a budget that is designed to cause service providers to leave the city, social service providers, to either leave the city or the profession by offering no cost-of-living adjustment during record inflation and no shelter options to offer people when they go to the multiple weekly sweeps. If Seattle has progressive values, the city cannot continue to take money out of Black neighborhoods, out of non-white neighborhoods, immigrant neighborhoods. If that money is for any purpose other than surveillance, restriction, and confinement, that money's got to go so that Seattle can give it to the wealthiest white neighborhoods for things like community gardens and small business cafes and shy dog parks. I would encourage council to bring the mayor's budget more in line with Seattle's values. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person is Amanda Daniels, followed by Lucinda Stroud. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Chair Mosqueta and Vice Chair Herbold and members of the Select Budget Committee. My name is Amanda Daniels, and I live in West Seattle, City Council District One. I'm a longtime human services worker, a current Masters of Social Work student, and a parent of young children. I'm here to address the compensation for human service workers. I know firsthand the difficulty of making ends meet due to low wages of human service work. Like other professionals in the city, we human service workers are paying expensive housing costs, increased grocery bills, and often student loans, which were necessary to obtain educational requirements for this type of work. Mayor Harold's budget includes a 4% cap on inflationary wage increases for human service workers. I urge you to look to other areas of the budget for cost savings. In a year with inflation calculated at 7.6%, the 4% cap would be a wage cut for workers like me. Human service workers are among the essential workers that brought us through the pandemic. These are the workers that care for our collective mental health, our loved ones in care facilities, our children in daycares, the unhoused, and many others. Human service workers need to be compensated to sustain their livelihoods in our great but costly city. Their work with some of Seattle's most vulnerable residents directly impacts the stability and safety of our communities. Council members, please remove the 4% gap from the cap from the 2023 budget, maintain the current alignment of inflationary wage increases with actual inflation for human service workers, and increase wages for human service workers to move toward pay equity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person is Lusay Shaina Lepard. Good morning, Lucinda.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lucinda Stroud, and I'm a certified nursing assistant living in District Seven. The current budget continues troubling classes, racist, and ableist structures through its dehumanizing and unconstitutional treatment of unhoused residents in Seattle and incarcerated people and its underfunding of human services workers. I'm calling in support of the Solidarity Budget's call for a budget to live, which calls for defunding all resources dedicated to the sweeps of homeless encampments. These sweeps exacerbate the complex tingle of poverty, trauma, and mental health and substance use disorders that unhoused people experience, further destabilizing them, leading to degraded community safety and increasing the likelihood that unhoused people will suffer premature death. The current funding of the city attorney makes our city even less safe as the attorney's campaign of aggressively prosecuting people for low-level crimes, largely crimes of poverty and addiction, is overcrowding the jail and leading to truly cruel and unusual punishments for people who should be presumed innocent until proven guilty. These conditions include no potable running water, menstruating people denied sanitary products and clean clothes for weeks, incarcerated people having no access to essential medicine, including insulin and the treatment of injuries. It has suicide rate eight times the national average. While the city cannot control funding at the jail, they can control funding of an overzealous city attorney directly responsible for overcrowding it. The funds allocated for sweep logistics and for the city attorney must be redirected to funding people's basic needs, including adequately compensating human services workers so that they have real capacity to meaningfully support the survival of some of the most vulnerable people in society. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next person is Shaina, followed by Fonetika Zong. Good morning, Shaina.
Hi, good morning, council members and guests. My name is Shaina Lepard, and I'm the Early Intervention Program Manager at Youth Care. I work with families for reconciliation. I work in school-based intervention programs and juvenile rehabilitation, reentry programs, primarily with under-18 young adults. The intention of our program is to prevent homelessness. I'm here today to ask you to invest in our workers. I've seen the impact of low wages, both as a frontline worker and a program manager. At Youth Care, we work to support young adults who are among marginalized communities to break the cycles of poverty and trauma that could hold them back from their full potential. This work is emotionally taxing. We regularly manage secondhand trauma that we are experiencing, and we cope with the truth of society that we see firsthand in our work, things like overdose, children living outside, cold and hungry. We're handed Seattle's biggest human crisis: poverty and homelessness. The people of Seattle need stability and a continuum of care with service providers they have a relationship with and trust. And we can't do this with our current turnover rates. These turnover rates, I believe, are related to a high-stress job and low wages. Higher wages give us the monetary resources we need to find solace on our time off and effectively manage secondhand trauma. It helps us afford to live without stress of how we will pay our rent or provide food to our families. The current living wage in Seattle is $70,000, and a frontline worker at Youth Care earns $48,000. This is a large gap between what we're earning and what's needed to live. Thank you for your time and attention. We look forward to working with you to recognize the importance of moving funds from our harmful police force and--
Thank you so much. And the next person is Fonetika, followed by Maureen Ewing. Good morning, Fonetika.
Good morning, council members. Good morning, council members. My name is Fonetika Zhang, and I am calling on behalf of Solid Ground, a multi-service organization that supports community members around Seattle with critical services. And I'm joining fellow human service advocates today in the Seattle Human Service Coalition in urging council to fully fund human service contracts. The proposed 4% cap on the city's required inflation adjustments to human service contracts is an effective cut on worker wages. Because public funds don't cover the full cost of services and private fundraising is limited, organizations are hard-pressed to fill this gap and keep up with rising costs. And unfortunately, this could lead to cut in services. This inflation cap not only harms our communities now, but will continue to inhibit our ability to provide services in the future. I urge the council to support the recommendations made by the Seattle Human Service Coalition to continue to fund the services that community members are relying on and the workers that provide these critical services. To sustain current services, we need, at the very least, to adjust human service contracts commensurate with the inflation that is actually impacting our organizations and our community members. And this is one really important step towards wage equity for undervalued human service workers. We can't achieve the safe, one Seattle that we all envision without the critical human services that build well-being for our community members. Thank you all so much for your attention to this issue throughout these challenging budget discussions to come.
Thank you so much. Maureen, followed by Clara Contor. Good morning, Maureen.
Good morning, Chair Mosqueta and council members. I'm Maureen Ewing, the Executive Director of U Heights in the U District, and I'm speaking in support of maintaining human service wages with inflation. Every day, we see firsthand how our human service workers are making a difference, not only in the lives of our neighbors who are unhoused by connecting them with housing and services, but are also on the front lines addressing our city's public safety, mental health, and gun violence crises. They risk their own safety to walk along freeway encampments and go into some of the most heart-wrenching parts of our city to support our most vulnerable populations. And they should not have to worry about their own financial stability. If we want a safe and equitable city, we need to invest in the human service workers who have devoted their careers and take on extreme emotional and physical burdens, with most of our workers only making $20 to $25 an hour. This is not the place to cut when our human service workers are needed now more than ever, and the labor shortage is already gutting our human service workforce. Along the same lines, we are under-investing and serving the nearly 50% of unhoused people who live in cars and RVs, and we need to invest in ongoing outreach and safe lots to not only serve the folks who are living on the margins, but also to mitigate the issues created in the right-of-way for our small businesses and residents by not having enough safe places for people to park. Thank you for listening and for your work in making these hard decisions about balancing the city budget.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Clara, followed by Christopher Lampkin. Good morning, Clara.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Hi, my name is Clara Cantor and I'm a community organizer with Seattle Neighborhood Greenways. I live in District Two and I'm here to speak today in support of the whole solidarity budget, which we've heard a number of commenters speaking about specific portions. And I'm also here to speak specifically about two items. The first is to ask you all to please keep the parking enforcement division in SDOT instead of moving it back to the Seattle Police Department. Civilian workers belong in a civilian-led department and parking enforcement officers in particular should be partners in curb space management to get people parking in places that allow everyone access to sidewalks and bike lanes and curb ramps and more, rather than just being an enforcement department. This kind of culture shift requires a lot more than one year to take place and to return the division to SPD locks us into that enforcement and punishment-first paradigm that's not actually working to make people safer on our streets. And the second item that I wanted to ask is to ensure that a hundred percent of the revenue from automatic red light camera enforcement is reinvested into Safe Streets projects rather than being directed back into the general fund. As someone who gets around by bike and transit, I know firsthand that Seattle streets often are incredibly unsafe for me just walking or biking around to get where I need to go. And an increase in revenue from automatic ticketing indicates that the street is less safe and more in need of safe infrastructure investment. And using that funding for the general fund also makes us a city that's more reliant on enforcement revenue for funding instead of using that revenue for the things that are solving the problems. Please support the solidarity budgets, Budget to Live and Budget to Thrive in its entirety, and thank you so much for your work on it.
Thank you so much. The next person is Christopher, followed by David Hedy. Good morning, Christopher. Seems like you are still muted. Could you hit star six one more time, Chris?
There we go. How's that?
Better, better.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the honorable members of the council. I'm Chris Lampkin. I'm a resident of District One from SEIU eleven ninety-nine Northwest and I work with our members at DEFC. What lessons have we learned from the pandemic? Our underfunded public health, our underfunded healthcare system, and our underfunded behavioral healthcare system were placed under incredible strain when they were most needed and it resulted in human suffering and preventable loss of life. While we are still in the pandemic, asking our human service providers, the front lines of caring for those most vulnerable of our neighbors, to take an effective pay cut is the wrong takeaway from what we have learned during this pandemic. I call on you, the council, not to do anything new, but to stand by the wise commitment many of you all made just three years ago to support our human service workers with inflation adjustments so that they can afford to do the work that they provide. Thank you, council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Christopher Lampkin. David, followed by Michael Melini. Good morning, Michael. Let's see here, Michael. Looks like we have David. Good morning, David. Sorry about that. Star six, unmute yourself, please. There we go. I can.
Hello, my name is David Hedy. I am a member of SEIU eleven ninety-nine Northwest and I am a Shelter Case Manager at DEFC. I just wanted to point out that, well, I wanted to state that I am here talking in favor of maintaining the inflationary adjustments. That was something that we worked very, very hard for a few years back and to hear that that might get taken back and get removed from the budget is extremely disheartening. So please, please maintain those. It is incredibly meaningful. The people that I work with are struggling just to get by. I know one of my coworkers was driving around with a nail in her tire because she couldn't afford to get it fixed. And she would just add air to her tire every day, just hoping that she didn't have a catastrophic failure. Another coworker, despite having health insurance and dental insurance, has not had a cavity fixed for months because she can't afford the copay and has had tons of migraines and headaches from it and has been chewing on one side of her mouth for like going on six months now. Because we're just living paycheck to paycheck. We are at the very verge of not being able to get by. And if these contracts are not keeping up with inflation, we're just getting, we're just moving backwards. We're making less and less every year. So, so please, please keep that inflationary adjustment. It's so necessary. This job is hard.
Thank you very much. Well said. And please send in any additional comments to us, David. Michael, good morning, followed by Katie Gendry.
Hi, my name is Michael Melini. I'm a resident in District Three, calling in support of the solidarity budget. The mayor's proposed budget should not support the spending of city resources on ShotSpotter, surveillance technology that's proven ineffective and impermissible as evidence in court because it contributes to biased policing. Additionally, parking enforcement officers should stay within the Seattle Department of Transportation to allow for greater collaboration with SDOT. And the mayor should not be permitted to provide funding for positions that SPD does not have any intention of hiring. Additionally, the budget should support Vision Zero, which provides funds for new sidewalk construction, protected bike lanes, and school safety improvements, and should defund sweeps of housing and campers and fund mobile pit stops and vehicle safe lots. Additionally, all jumpstart funds should be retained for their intended use. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thanks so much for dialing in. The next person's Katie, followed by Jennifer Lee. Good morning, Katie.
Council members, my name is Katie Gendry and I live in D Six and I fully support the solidarity budget. Stop the sweeps by ending all funding that goes to traumatizing our unhoused neighbors. Without shelter, people die. The number of unhoused people dying continues to increase each year and the city must end these deaths by stopping sweeps. Shelter in tiny homes are not long-term housing. Plus, tiny homes are full. Houseless people want to live inside stably and want to remain in their local community with their existing support networks. Sweeps are so expensive and make everyone in the neighborhood feel less safe because they worsen the conditions that lead to isolation, harm, and violence. Sweeps disrupt the progress made by working with human service providers. Defund sweeps of people living unsheltered and fund outreach and human services, production efforts, mobile health support, local med management, public bathrooms, mobile pit stops, and vehicle safe lots. Where are unsheltered people allowed to exist? As a human service provider myself, barely covering my bills, I'm very disturbed by the pay cuts to human service workers proposed in Mayor Harold's budget. Working in human services is an emotionally heavy and stressful job. In a budget where police officers are being offered recruitment and retention packages, this legislation is slap-to-my-face. We are serious about ending homelessness and building up our communities. We need to listen to the needs of unhoused people and we need to pay essential workers more, not less, to support those needs, including those working frontline at shelters and treatment centers. This is why I support solidarity budgets, pay increases, and retention bonuses for human service providers. Stop the sweeps, defund SPD, and pay essential workers more. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you so much. The next person is Jennifer Lee, followed by Felicia Owens-Parson, who is listed as not present. Please go ahead, Jennifer.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jennifer Lee and I'm the Technology and Liberty Policy Lead at the ACLU of Washington. We oppose the one million dollars allocated to gunfire detection technologies in the mayor's twenty twenty-three to twenty-four proposed budget. These technologies are not effective, they are costly to purchase and maintain, and they exacerbate police violence. A twenty twenty-one peer-reviewed study of ShotSpotter used in sixty-eight US counties showed no reduction in firearm homicides, murder arrests, or weapons arrests. There are no independent peer-reviewed studies of ShotSpotter's accuracy. In twenty seventeen, a ShotSpotter forensic analyst testified that the ShotSpotter accuracy claims were put together by ShotSpotter's sales and marketing department, not their engineers. We also know that ShotSpotter has a close relationship with law enforcement that further makes it inappropriate to use ShotSpotter evidence in court. A ShotSpotter expert admitted in the twenty sixteen trial that the company reclassified sounds from a helicopter to a bullet at the request of a police department customer, saying such changes occur all the time because, quote, "we trust our law enforcement customers to be really upfront and honest with us." The use of ShotSpotter has not been effective at picking up actual gunshots and has rather led to many false alarms that have led to wrongful convictions and deadly police violence. In response to ShotSpotter's ineffectiveness and its proven harm to communities, many cities that have spent millions on this technology, including Buffalo, Charlotte, and San Antonio, have actually ended up canceling their contracts. We urge city council to reject the use of gunfire detection technologies like ShotSpotter, which are not effective at reducing gun violence, increase surveillance, are inappropriate to use in court and will cause further harm to communities. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you so much. Next is Felicia. Felicia Owens-Parson, you are listed as not present. So we're going to go to the next folks. I'm going to actually list the next five people who are listed as not present and then we'll end with the two that are here. If anybody hears their name and can still dial in, we will be happy to come back to you. Folks signed up to speak but are not present include Felicia Owens-Parson, Patrick Dunn, John Rios, Bill James, Darren Lewis, Salomon Apaldolo. If you just heard your name, Felicia Patrick John, Bill Darren Salaman, please do dial in. We're going to go to the last two that are listed to speak that are present. And that includes Tiffany Coleman and David Hines. Good morning, Tiffany. Star six, unmute. Thank you.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Tiffany Coleman and I'm longtime resident of West Seattle while as a current firefighter for twenty years, twenty-two years, twenty of them on Engine Thirty-seven located in the south end of West Seattle, serving the areas we're discussing today. Keep in mind, my proposal speaks to lifesaving actions, non-discriminate to our communities and populations. Should a person become pulseless, death or permanent brain damage is imminent outside of four minutes. Fire growth becomes severe and greatest risk to occupants and firefighters within the first ten minutes. I appreciate District One was prioritized with the decision to place a ladder truck to the Community Fire Station Thirty-seven in the High Point neighborhood and a medic unit, Fire Station Twenty-six in South Park. I'm asking that you please continue to provide funding for these two units. This southern area of West Seattle is one of the greatest, largest response districts in the Seattle Fire Department, already pushing out response timeframe. Both units provide specialty skill and task to our area that cannot be performed by an engine company and are specific to a ladder truck or medic unit. This delay potentially can be outside of lifesaving minutes for medical calls. This delay can also interrupt our task priority and ability to fight fire and risk firefighter safety. I understand that though these resources were originally intended to stay in place through the bridge opening, I'm grateful they have sufficient funding to remain in place through the end of twenty-two. However, this is not a sufficient commitment to these residents of West Seattle, specifically the underserved areas of Delridge, High Point, Highland Park, South Park, and Arbor Heights. Without the ladder truck at Station Thirty-seven, there's only one ladder truck to serve all of West Seattle. Any major response to ladder trucks or dispatch per those calls, extrication, fire-related search and...
I'm so sorry that the time expired, but please send in the rest of your comments and we definitely caught the gist of what you were getting through, but please send that to council@seattle.gov. John Rios, followed by David Hines. Good morning, John.
Hi. I believe you all can hear me now. My name is John Rios. I am an intensive case manager for DEFC's host program. I'm calling in to talk about some of the budget proposals today. My work specifically, I work all over Seattle from the south end all the way up to the north end, but I think most prominently is a lot of the work that we do on Third Avenue. Over the last few years, we've definitely had a lot more increased intention and pressure on folks in the Third Avenue corridor to get them into housing and other services, which has been complicated by, of course, the pandemic and just all the issues that we're facing in the human services sector right now. Right now, we have an incredible amount of unstapped positions. Wages are incredibly low and about three years ago, a lot of us came to city council to talk about the increases for inflationary or the inflationary increases. And at that time, it feels like that we had made an agreement at that time that that was the least that we could do for our folks working in human services was to see some of those increases tied to inflation. There's a lot of work that needs to be done right now as far as wages, but I want to keep this brief. At this time, I'm really concerned about right now the proposal to cap things at four percent, which just is not what we agreed upon. And in a time when all of us are struggling so hard, we're frontline workers. We've been here during the entire time of COVID and kept working with very difficult populations. It is extremely difficult to keep people stabbed and in positions when we know that what's going to happen right now being proposed is effectively a decrease in our wages. So with that, I will go ahead and yield my time.
Thank you for dialing in. David Hines, you are listed as the last speaker present. Good morning, David.
Thank you, David Hines. We have a public safety crisis exacerbated by city hall policies still exempting evil drug pushers from jail if they have under three point five grams. And we have a homeless crisis with compounded exponential suffering caused by city council's racist skin color policies of discriminations and misjudgments purposely not helping innocent, law-abiding, houseless citizens while prioritizing BIPOC repeat offending criminals, given the motel, housing, and services first instead of improved jail, resulting in three George Soros-funded nonprofits co-opting our criminal injustice system, squandering a majority of the homeless public safety money given to Just Care, Lead, and Public Defender, spending one hundred and twenty thousand dollars per repeat offending criminal while council and nonprofits refuse to invest twenty thousand dollars each, helping innocent, law-abiding, forsaken citizens. Yet, city council continues to pay off George Floyd and Black Lives Matter protesters from last budget, pocketing sixty million dollars for unqualified alternative policing and misinterpretation of equity. This year, during election season, again, they're going to get the same sixty million dollars. Yet, that money was originally earmarked for homeless crisis, where all these people are still suffering with no capacity. The only capacity council cares about is building community loyalty. Now, our budget process needs to have an investigation of the CBO offices because it seems like they're trading favors, helping council's personal agenda while not being fully transparent with the spending allocations, using words to describe what and who was pocketing the money by saying et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, censoring and hiding from the people this corrupt, treasonous, racist budget process with the same failed spending policies, doubling down, gambling with the futures, proving this council is a threat to real progress and proper policy. Please resign. You've ruined this city and...
Alrighty, with that, I don't see anybody else sign up for public comment that is present. Thank you all for dialing in today. Appreciate that so many folks dialed in remotely. That is what we are strongly encouraging, given Dr. Khan's opening comments about the ongoing pandemic. We do want to make sure that we continue to hear from folks, though. That is why we have identified five opportunities for public hearing only. So today was an example of our condensed public comment period. We have committed to starting out each week that we meet with at least ninety minutes of public comment to make sure that we get through everyone. We have gotten through everybody who's signed up for public comment today. And we will continue to have extended public comment at the beginning of our meetings that are noted on the public, on the public comment summary document that Communications has posted on our website. We put on our social media. So again, this evening, we do welcome public comment. It starts at five PM. We are encouraging folks to dial in remotely. There will be the opportunity for folks who do want to testify in public to come. If you are signing up remotely, you... If you are signing up remotely, you can start signing up at 3:00 PM, two hours prior to the hearing. And we will actually start with the first 10 people who've dialed in remotely. Then we'll go to the next 10 people who are in the room. For anybody who wants to sign up and provide public comment in chambers, you can sign up starting at 4:30 PM outside of council chambers. As a reminder, the rest of this week, we will have written public comment only and you can always send us comments to council@seattle.gov. We have postcards that are placed outside of the council chambers as well and at the front desk of City Hall and our legislative department to receive your public comments if you come and would like to write us a note instead. This is our way of trying to make sure that we hear from everybody, but that we also protect everybody's health and safety. So again, in-person signup starts at 4:30 PM. Our, those who are dialing in remotely online starts at 3:00 PM. Just by way of reminder, apologies to those who might have asked us earlier from different offices. The public comment for the upcoming public hearings, starting at 5:00 PM. We will make sure to get through everybody who's dialed in. Again, I'm going to call on the first 10 speakers remotely, then the next 10 people in person. I'll call on people in the order in which they are registered on the council's website and in person on the paper as well. I will rotate between the online groups and in person in groups of 10. As I noted in my comments in briefing and in the Monday memo that we send to council, there is not an opportunity for group testimony this year. Given the remote nature of our hybrid meetings, we do need to treat everybody equally. So since there's no opportunity for remote group testimony, we are giving everyone the same amount of time, either online or in person, but there's not an opportunity for group testimony. So please do dial in. Of course, feel free to sign up in the order in which you prefer, if you'd like to have sequential comments. If you do not have a mask in council chambers, we're going to encourage you to wear one. We will have masks available onsite. And I want to make sure that folks know that all of the mics will cut off after the allotted time. So everyone will have 10-second timer to wrap up their comments, whether they're in person or on the online platform. Your mics will be muted at the end of your allotted time, so this is going to treat everyone equally. And because our process has been to make sure that we can get through everybody who has signed up, as in the past, there is no opportunity for us to sort of delay with applauses or boos. So if you are in person and you like to support something that's being said, you can do this, as we've done in the past. But that helps us make sure that it's equal treatment to folks who are online and in the room. So again, that will help us make sure that we get through everybody. And please do feel free to raise your hands in support if you are in the room, but there will be no applauding or booing. I look forward to hearing from everyone this evening, who is going to join us for our public hearing, one of three public hearings solely dedicated to getting comments from the public in addition to these extended public comment periods at our select budget committee, public hearings, public committee meetings. Okay, colleagues, I also want to remind you that as we head into these deliberations that are coming up about the base understanding of the budget, the revenue streams that are being used, how the not only biennial budget, but the six-year financial plan is being configured as we go into the department discussions over the next three days. A reminder that amendments to the mayor's proposed budget are due to Central Staff, October 11th, that's next Monday at 2:00 PM. Please do make sure that you are discussing ideas with Central Staff as soon as you can so that when you submit your amendments to Central Staff with two cosponsors, they have a general sense of what you're seeking and can brainstorm with you in advance if possible. With that, our public comment for today, let me just double check that nobody else signed up. Okay, great. Our public comment for today is now closed. Madam Clerk, we're going to move on in to items listed on today's agenda, with starting with item number one.
Agenda item one, introduction and budget hearings overview.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. For our introduction and budget hearing overview, we do have with us Director Esther Handy, Deputy Director Ali Panucci from Central Staff. And colleagues, I want to thank you again for your participation today. We are going to go over the Central Staff introduction with the Director and Deputy Director and get right into the balancing related to our funding policies. This is an opportunity really to orient ourselves. So this week, we will be unpacking the general fund and the general fund adjacent revenues in the afternoon. And throughout today, I want us to be thinking about the financial stability of not just the biennial budget, but the upcoming six years. We've spent a lot of time talking about how we got to this place, where Jump Start, Progressive Payroll Tax, the American Rescue Plan, the Federal Coronavirus Local Relief Fund have been used in the last two years as we have sat in this chair as, sat in this position as Chair of the Budget Committee to make sure that we've protected against austerity, protected against cuts. And we need to figure out the long-term stability for our city as we also craft a stable two-year financial plan. So this morning, we'll have a chance to get into those details about what is being proposed. And this afternoon, we will have more of an opportunity to look at the general fund adjacent revenues, including the short-term rental tax, the transportation network company tax, and the Jump Start payroll expense tax. Central Staff has begun identifying issues for discussion. In some cases, there are options for us for consideration. You do not necessarily need to weigh in with specific priorities at this juncture. We are all in absorbing mode, for sure. This is the first of our four-day deliberations, but Central Staff has begun to identify issues for our consideration. So again, individual council members, of course, feel free to ask questions, share your thoughts, but please do not feel obligated to weigh in on the options. Those are for our deliberations and consideration, as Central Staff always does. Just a reminder for the week, in terms of logistics, we will be taking a break every day from 1:00 to 2:00 PM for a lunch break. And many of us have scheduled meetings in those times, so we will make sure to agenda before 1:00 PM every day. And please do return promptly at 2:00 PM. It is also my goal to make sure that we get out of here by 5:00 PM each night. Many of us have other obligations in community with family and friends, so we want to make sure to keep those. And for anybody who is dialing in, again remotely this evening, we're going to try to end our conversation today at 4:00 PM so that there's an hour break between today's deliberations and the upcoming public hearing starts at 5:00. Welcome, Director Handy. Thank you for orienting us to the conversation when we met on September 28th. You started with a series of questions that you'll be looking at, and I really appreciated those because those questions were rooted in what the council, the executive branch had codified in statute, priorities that have been put into law that, that mirror our values and where our, our discussions, our deliberations should really center around in terms of how the resources are investing in the statutory requirements and the values that the city has already codified in statute. So I thank you for orienting us in that way when we met on the 28th. And now we're going to walk through fundamentals of the budget as proposed so we can have a grounding before we head into the departments. I'll turn it over to you for a quick orientation as to where we are at in our deliberations and appreciate you being here with us and your team.
Thank you. Thank you, Budget Chair Masqueda. Good morning, council members. Esther Handy, your Central Staff Director. This week, we kick off our budget hearings where we are going to hear from both city departments and your Central Staff team about the details of the 2023 and '4 proposed budget. As we kick off, I wanted to start with a thank you for my team. This team includes 16 incredible analysts who, over the course of the past 10 business days, have reviewed the entire $7.4 billion proposed budget. They have authored 35 budget overview papers and detailed appendices, and I am incredibly proud of the work that they have done. Patty, if you want to go to the next slide, I just want to pull up their names. You will see them online throughout the week, and I just want to take a brief moment to acknowledge them upfront. From our infrastructure team, Brian Goodnight, Calvin Chow, Lisa Kay, Eric McConaughey, Tracy Ratsliff, our Land Use and Labor Team, Yolanda Ho, Karina Bol, Kedal Freeman, Jasmine Marwaha, and Lish Whitson, the Community Safety and Health Team with Asha Venkataraman, Greg Das, Amy Gore, and Ann Gorman, and finally, our incredible budget team led by Ali Panucci, our Deputy Director, our two analysts, Tom Mikesel and our newest analyst, Adam Sisit, and finally, Patty Wiggren, our Executive Assistant, who has done just an incredible job this week, taking all of these materials, getting them agenda-ready, both for council members and the public. So thank you to our team. I also want to thank the analysts and the leadership in the City Budget Office and in Department Finance staff, who have fielded literally hundreds of questions from our team. They have sat patiently with us on calls and provided detailed responses in writing to our many, many of our questions. If you are on the line listening, we appreciate you, and our work would not be possible without your partnership. These last 10 days have been a sprint, and I'd like to say that the work in front of you today and this week, it is not perfect, but it is rigorous, and it reflects our best understanding that we have been able to develop in that time. So today, today we are going to look at a close look at the general fund. Our goals of today's discussion are first and foremost to understand the nature of that $141 million operating deficit. We then would like to define the strategies that have been used to address the deficit in the mayor's proposed budget, looking at sort of two broad categories. First, the structural approaches. So where have items been cut in an ongoing way? Or where are there changes proposed to revenues or fund policies that permanently impact the budget? And the second category are temporary strategies for reductions, vacancy saving, sort of belt tightening to balance in '23 and '24. We will build this analysis through the morning in our presentation with the hope of landing at uncovering the future year impact of the structural deficit and how the proposed strategies impact that. And our hope in that spending a full day on this today is that we set the context for department and programmatic-specific conversations that follow this week. Before we get into the details, I'll give you just a brief preview, a couple spoilers on this next slide. The first is that, like last year, without the Jump Start Payroll Expense Tax revenues, you would be receiving a deep cuts budget. The second is, as we build our analysis and share today, the general fund structural deficit continues to grow in the out-years. And without more substantive changes or a new revenue source, we will continually be having this conversation. And finally, and we mention this to you often, there are not easy answers. There is a trade-off to every balancing strategy that the mayor and City Budget Office have done in their proposed budget that you will also face. As you think about those hard trade-offs, I remind you that it is the council that has the final call on how to prioritize resources amongst competing needs in your adopted budget. Ultimately, this budget process will come down to your choices about policy priorities. And as you think about those priorities, I'm just going to put up on the screen the same questions I invited you to consider last week about some of those priorities you have collectively set through legislation and work as a council. Does the proposed budget use a regional solution to serve homeless individuals and families? Does it maintain a clean city with accessible parks and open space? Does it support a public safety system that recruits and retains our public safety workforce? And also, does it advance a reimagining of policing with a larger civilian response network and new alternative 911 responses? Does the budget advance a vision zero transportation strategy that invests in our core road and road bridge infrastructure? Does it invest in partnership with local tribes, support our native communities, and care for our most vulnerable residents, as well as those that offer frontline services to them? And of course, as you think about your priorities, does the proposed budget advance the initiatives you have legislated through committee work this year? I'll turn it over to Ali to remind us of the process, and then Ali and Tom will walk you through the details. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you, Director Handy. Good morning, Chair Masqueda, council members. I'm Ali Panucci of your Central Staff. Today, as Director Handy and Chair Masqueda have described, we're on step two in the budget process where we will present our analysis of how the general fund balances and then move on into department-specific presentations. If we could move on to the next slide. This just outlines the departments and topics that will be covered for the rest of the week as Chair Masqueda described earlier this morning. This is not covering every detail of the proposed budget, but rather highlights where there are key changes and areas where Central Staff, through our work with all of you throughout the year and in the last two weeks, have identified issues and identified potential options to help inform your decisions about whether to accept or reject the mayor's proposals. This reflects a tremendous amount of work by our incredible team of Central Staff analysts to unpack a 700-plus-page proposed budget, along with numerous technical documents to highlight these key issues, and we look forward to continuing those conversations throughout the week and over the next six weeks of the budget process. If we can move on to the next slide. Coming quickly on the heels of these budget hearing discussions will be discussion of council members' proposed budget amendments. Those amendments will be discussed October 25th through the 27th. And just as a reminder, any item you want considered for inclusion in the initial balancing package needs to have a budget amendment request submitted. And I won't go into those details, as Chair Masqueda covered that earlier in the day. So I'd just like to take a moment, before we move into the main show for today, I want to second the appreciation for the City Budget Office offered by Director Handy and for entire Central Staff team, the work to develop the proposed budget by the City Budget Office, and then the work of the Central Staff team to unpack and prepare these detailed papers exactly two weeks from the day the proposed budget was transmitted as a big task. And I'm just endlessly impressed by the thoughtfulness and commitment to public service that they all bring to this work. And then finally, I just wanted to thank Director Handy specifically for her leadership and encouragement to do the work and endless optimism that makes it easier to show up and do this work every day. So with that, I think I will turn it back to the chair as we move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, so that was short overview of where we are at in the process. Does anybody have any questions about the agenda and the timeline before we dive into the slides? All right, sounds good. Well, I appreciate all of the thanks. As the council president knows well, really do want to make sure that we honor the work of our teams that are doing this. And I choked up a little bit walking into County City Hall today because somebody stopped me on the sidewalk and said, "Council member, I just want to thank you for your service." Started crying a little bit because these are tough times that we're dealing with, folks. So I want to thank all of you for your service. And as Ali and Esther noted, really thank the Central Staff and the city staff, including the City Budgets Office, for all of the work that they've done in this process. We're going to have lots of opportunity for questions. There's going to be many concerns that come up and many positions that might put us in contradicting positions within our colleagues. But I think folks know here well that all of this is done in the service of the city, trying to make sure that everybody has the resources that they need and that we're creating a more stable and equitable Seattle. So thank you all for your work on this, to the city family and to the members of the public who continue to help us or help us evaluate the proposed budget and to make the changes that they're suggesting. Let's get right into it. Madam Clerk, could you read? Are we going into the next agenda item? Or are we still on number one?
Agenda item two. Agenda item two, general fund balancing and related fund policies for briefing and discussion.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead. Esther and Ali, Director Handy, Deputy Director Panucci, please take it away.
Thank you. I think we have outlined sort of the general plan for what we will cover today. So I think we can just jump right in, and I will turn it over to my colleague, Tom Mikesel, to kick us off.
Thank you, Deputy Director Panucci. Good morning. Chair Masqueda, members of the Select Budget Committee. As described in prior comments, we are going to cover, and then in this series of presentations this morning, the general fund financial planning analysis. And then I believe in the afternoon, we'll cover related fund policies. All of this work is captured within a detailed memo that was distributed yesterday and is will be provided with the agenda. And I'll make references, since there is a great amount of detail that is impossible to cover within the limited time, I'll make references to the page numbers in the memo where. I'll make references to the page numbers in the memo where they apply.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, Tom. And I'm just wondering as well as we we have so much appreciation for the work of Tom Mikezow in our office amongst the amongst the city council members and staff for the detailed analysis that he's brought to unpacking the budgets in the past. I want to just say how important this foundational memo is. If you haven't read the first thirty-four pages, please do take the time to read it. If not today, then later it will be important for our deliberations going forward. And then in the PowerPoint presentations, maybe in the future, if we get the chance to cite the memo page number on the PowerPoint slide, that'd be helpful too. But thank you for noting that as we walk through. And thank you for all of the work that you've done throughout the last two and a half years that I've been in this seat. And especially starting on May fourth, when we really had an opportunity to walk through unpacking of the revenue projections, and this is another great example of a central staff memo. So I just wanted to prop that up and encourage folks to read it if they haven't yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Musqueta, for the warm comments, and I'm happy to add value to the process for this budget process and for all prior budget processes. So with that, if we could go to the next slide. So just a high-level view of the various pieces that are covered in the memo will be covered this morning. I'm going to talk about where, as Chair Musqueta alluded, that we really started looking at the general fund financial gap in May of this year and discussions at the Finance and Housing Committee with a follow-up in August, right ahead of receiving the proposed budget. So we'll cover kind of where we were before the budget was proposed. Then we will take a brief tour into the kind of final adjustments for the current 2022 budget, because those adjustments have bearing on financial status going into next year's budget. Kind of spend a bit more detail on looking at the high-level changes and the broad moves ongoing one-time revenue and expenditure, excuse me, in the mayor's 2023, 2024 budget proposal. Then extend the analysis out to future years to kind of close the loop on the financial sustainability discussions that were started in May, on May fourth and are continuing today and through the upcoming process to kind of show an update on how the sustainability is essentially made a little bit more difficult. And then cover, I believe, later in the afternoon, some other fund policies that are related to the general fund financial planning, but also are important within the context of those funds themselves. So if we could look at the next slide, we'll dive into the details. So this represents the financial plan table that will be familiar to those on the Finance and Housing Committee. We have also shared to the broader council, as we've had the discussions during the year with regards to financial sustainability. The numbers that you see right here represent the update that was provided at the Finance and Housing Committee on August seventeenth. And it included the latest update on revenues that we received from the City Budget Office and the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecasts that were also presented on the seventeenth. The presentation that you know, that we recovered, not only covered the upcoming two years of the budget, but also the future years to give a view into future sustainability. This table includes a lot of numbers. I'm not going to go through a lot of the details as we move along, but really talk about the key performance indicators, I guess, for lack of a better term, for the committee to consider when reviewing the budget. And these are the figures that are highlighted in blue. One is the operating surplus deficit, which is the difference between ongoing, so the annual regular revenues that the city receives and the expenditures against those revenues, as you can see, and as was discussed, the committee, that number was negative. And then finally, the ending and reserve fund balances, which is the level of resources that is remaining in the fund at the end of each year. So it takes any amount of starting balance that was available, adds in the revenue, subtracts out the expenditures, adjusts for reserves that are not part of the appropriated budget and gets to the bottom line. And as you will recall, there were reports and based on this material that the 2023 budget was projected to have a seventeen million dollar ending unreserved balance and a four-hundred-and-forty-three million dollar ending unreserved balance at the end of 2026. So definitely indicators of unsustainable financial plan. And the next slide, I think, shows this, makes this point even better, which is a comparison of the lines of expenditures and revenues. And at that time, we illustrated that there was about an average operating gap of a hundred and forty-two million dollars in every year. So that's the kind of broad context. If we can go to the next slide, there are just some key technical details that are covered in the memo, and I will give you the page reference.
Five.
Page five, thank you. So page five of the memo. So in order to really highlight the sustainability at committee, the staff, I have made some adjustments to some of the numbers using the exact same information that CBOs uses, but reorganizing the display. And this relates to just basically how revenues and reserves are treated in the financial plan. So what you see before you on the screen now is the CBO format for the financial plan. So it's the same numbers, it's just reorganized slightly, and the difference is going to be really shown in the operating surplus deficit, which is the comparison between revenues and expenditures. And I'm showing you this because the remainder of the presentation will be using the CBO format for display, because that is how the budget is received. And there are critical details, particularly with regards to the treatment of reserves, that means using the central staff approach wouldn't be effective. And if we could look at the next slide, I'll show you a kind of the lines that are changed. So if you recall, I indicated there was a hundred and forty-one hundred and forty-two million dollar average structural deficit indicated by the operating surplus deficit row. So this number in the CBO format is significantly lower. And the reason is, however, the ending unreserved fund balance is the same. And if we can go to the next slide, you'll see what the adjustments are. And the adjustments are how non-appropriated reserves are treated between the two different plans. In the CBO format, growth in in some key areas of general fund expenditure, notably labor costs, are put into the what's called planning reserves, which is a non-appropriated item in the financial plan, so not part of the budget adoption schedules that are submitted to the council. However, they certainly represent elements of growth. And to really get a key, a good look at sustainability, those amounts need to be considered against the annual revenues that are collected to support them. And so you can see the comparison between the expenditures and in the CBO plan versus the central staff plan, they're higher in the central staff plan, because I adjust the reserves line to show those amounts as expenditures, because they are they are key elements of general fund growth. So and at the bottom line, there's no difference in the plans. The underlying outputs are the same. It's just really a technique to highlight the sustainability in a better, in my opinion, better way. So with that being said, no more super technical things. I just had to point that out, because it is an adjustment that is sort of translation between how we're looking at these numbers during the year at Finance Committee and the numbers that we're going to be looking at and contrasting changes in the budget against.
Okay, Tom, let's pause here for a second, because I don't want this point to get lost. And for folks who are following along in the memo, we're on page number six, looking at the summary takeaway here. The reason that I think that it's important to pause here is because for the last four or five years that I've been on council, there's this constant theme that comes up when there's concern around maybe unknown amounts for future bargaining or unknown amounts for future liability. And the message that I've received repeatedly was, don't worry, it's in the planning reserves. It is very important, I think, for us to pause here and understand the advantages of breaking out the planning reserves in the way that central staff has in this memo. And not that it's going to be the way that we define what is currently in those uncommitted amounts, the non-appropriated revenues going forward for this discussion, but I think it will be very informative for the next four or five weeks as we formulate our budget. As Tom notes in the central staff memo on page six, the difference between the CBO format shows significant elements of general fund growth, particularly in services for personnel, employee wages, salaries, and benefit costs as accumulative increase to the planning reserves, instead of showing these as projected costs as expenditures in the year that they are added to the plan. So it's clear that we know we need to account for wages, salaries, benefits, other items that we think are on the horizon that we need to plan for. But that's never been included in the above-the-line expenditures that the city should see when we think about what our total budget is. So given that the CBO format displays significant elements of expenditure growth below the line in these planning reserves, it's important that we're drawing this out, that central staff uses this alternative format to better identify issues of financial stability, i.e. what's actually going to be spent in this biennium and in future bienniums. Tom, could you elaborate a little bit more about the benefits of drawing out this model versus the CBO model that we're accustomed to?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. So the key the key benefit, just from a perspective of understanding the city's finances, is that it allows the building of the chart that we saw a few slides earlier that compared revenues and expenditures. If you use the expenditure line from the CBO financial plan in that type of a chart, you're going to see a much lower expenditure total, which compares against revenue and shows a much smaller gap. But you're leaving out, then, these key pieces of growth, which are in the CBO format, shown as a below-the-line accumulation of reserves. And it's just, it's important for me to note that the CBO's plan does account for that those elements of growth. It's just a matter of display at this stage. Though there is concepts that I'll cover later in the presentation about whether or not there are other possibility, possible ways to structure those reserves, which would include, not to spoil the presentation, but would include appropriating some portion of that amount, building that those annual increases in reserves as part of the budget appropriation in the year that they are shown in the plan. Because currently, the budget as proposed does not include them in the budget appropriation request. They are shown below the line as a reserved amount. So it's really that. It's a, it's a a display, ability to better understand sustainability, and then further whether or not the adopted budget should truly match what the expectations for expenditure are in that particular year.
Thank you so much. Thanks for drawing that out. I think that's a really important point. Again, the CBO model will be used for the rest of the central staff presentation here, but just know that the analysis that central staff has at their fingertips will be to help us understand what is included or what needs to be accounted for in the biennial budget and what needs to be considered for the six-year financial plan. Just in terms of defining terms, Tom, I just wondered if, when we look at the term non-appropriated reserves, is that a combination of planning reserves and expected or assumed underspend? Is there anything else that makes up non-appropriated reserves in its definition?
Madam Chair, those would be the two key pieces. It's basically, there's the appropriated budget, which is the budget adoption schedules that have been submitted with the legislation. And then there is the financial plan, which includes the submitted appropriation amounts, and then as well, an underspent assumption and a reserve accumulated reserve balance, both of which are not included in the formal budget adoption schedules. So those are the key pieces, and I'll talk about them further in the presentation.
Great. And then just my final question for orientation purposes. If we look at the previous slide, I spent a lot of time trying to explain to our friends, stakeholders, members of the public, the operating deficit that we are walking into, a hundred and forty-one million for next year, a hundred and fifty-two million for the following year in 2024. Can you help us understand a little bit more about this bottom line number, the the ending unreserved ending fund balance? Because no matter which way you slice it, as you noted, for the operating deficit, we still have the same numbers as our ending unreserved ending fund balance. And what is the significance of seventeen point five for 2023 and a hundred and seventy in 2024?
Thank you. And if we could perhaps move to, this is the CBO format, and I think the point is better highlighted with that central staff format. I believe it's prior slide.
There we go.
Thank you. So how it all ties together, the operating surplus deficit row really only looks at the money coming in each year and the expenditures that are going out each year. And in this format, the expenditures going out each year includes the planning reserves that that we've discussed this morning. So that's that metric. It's kind of like a sustainability each year. When you operate, do you generate more or less money than is needed to fund those operations? The bottom line number, the ending unreserved balance, really is looking at each year how much money is available in the fund to be spent. And we'll cover some of these concepts a bit later and the next few slides. But a big piece of the financial plan in this display and in the proposed budget is the starting balance. And so the starting balance is just a block of cash that's in the fund that's unobligated and is available to be to be spent. I lost the presentation view. Okay, and so as you can see, there is, starting at least in the August seventeen display, a hundred and eighty-four million dollars of just cash in the fund that is available to be spent. And so if you work in the 2023 column down, there was predicted to be about a one-point-five billion dollars of revenues, one-point-seven million dollars of expenditures. There are, which would lead to an ending budgetary fund balance. So this is the, you know, taking the revenues annually from the expenditures annually and calculating that difference, and then adding in a planning reserve assumption, which is essentially the amount that was held in 2022's budget. And then after all that is said and done, you end up with seventeen point four million dollars in the fund balance. So essentially, the difference is the operating surplus deficit really compares just annual ongoing revenues and expenditures. The ending unreserved fund balance picks into account whether or not how much money you start the fiscal year with. And so that's key to why there's a difference between the hundred and forty-one and the seventeen, is because this implies that the budget is spending down all of that a hundred and eighty-four million dollars that the fund started with in 2023.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't see any additional questions. We can keep going.
Thank you. So I believe we were just going to head into a final recap of 2022. So this is covered in section three of the memo, pages seven through nine. And this table collects various pieces of kind of final adjustments for 2022 that have an impact on, you know, it's useful to say it had an impact on how much cash we start 2023 with in the proposed budget. So there are a number of standalone adjustments that have already been adopted subsequent to the August seventeenth presentation. In total, they added a hundred and one-point-three million dollars of new revenue. There was about a half a million dollars of new expenditure. There was about a half a million dollars of new expense. So that actually had an advantageous impact on the the surplus deficit and the ending fund balance. So that those those bills have already been approved. There were there were two, they're noted in detail on the memo. Next, the next column, working from left to right, is proposed supplementals. So these, this these details summarize at a high level the proposed proposed supplemental grants and appropriations bills that were submitted as budget legislation with the mayor's proposed budget. So these are the the final grant acceptances, which are included and detailed on attachment A to the memo and the final kind of high-level budget expenditures, which are highlighted on page eight. In total, these spend a a net thirty-three million dollars of money. So expenditures are three to three million dollars higher than the revenues that are coming in. And the revenues are largely grants, which decreases the ending and reserve fund balance. And I do see a question. I don't know if I should go, I should.
Yeah, that sounds good. Are you done with the summary of this slide?
I would just, I, there's only one final piece, and it's an important piece. I can I can address it fairly quickly. And this is in the other category. And this is, you'll see in the expenditures row, a twenty million dollar reduction. And so this is covered in the memo. It actually shows up not only in twenty twenty-two, but in twenty-three and twenty-four of the mayor's proposed budget. This is an underspend. So what this represents is not a budget cut, but rather an IOU or a commitment to come in twenty million dollars under the the adopted or revised, I should say, twenty twenty-two budget. For twenty twenty-two, there you will recall, there was a list of items and they're included as attachment B with the memo of various programs and ads that were added, most largely representing items added by council that were held for expenditure during this year. So these were items that were included in fall twenty twenty-one, however, no monies were spent on them. And it's indicated that the that list will largely represent this underspend commitment or this IOU to come in under budget. And then finally, there are some adjustments to the the planning reserves that we have discussed that we can't really go into much detail on those, but they do actually reduce the amount of of the planned reserves in twenty twenty-two. And much of it is to support items that are being spent in the proposed supplemental column. So with all that detail, the key kind of the key indicator of this table is what it does to the resources that happen or that are available for expenditure beginning in twenty twenty-three. And I think the next slide does does the work of really highlighting the number to pay the most attention to. You know, in in understanding the kind of decision around the proposed supplementals and the other and the other adjustments is that at the end of twenty-two, there will be one hundred and seventy-one million dollars rolling into twenty twenty-three for appropriation in the budget. And so that does that 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 covers the details of this table.
Okay, thanks so much. So colleagues, again, we're on section three of the memo, pages seven, eight and nine. Councilmember Nelson, I saw your hand first.
I retract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Nelson. Well, I have a number of questions. I have a number of questions about the concept of an IOU in a budget. Can you tell me where you've seen this type of budgetary strategy used in the past, if at all, Tom?
I'm it's in terms of having a just a broad number, I'm not necessarily familiar with it. What I'm more familiar with is a more detailed department-level review of expenditures. So as part of the budget request, asking each department to 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 indicate where they are with regards to their their spending projections for the year and and reassess those expenditures in work with the Central Budget Office. And and essentially say, we at a department level are going to spend five hundred thousand dollars, let's just say, less than the adopted budget. And then through that kind of more detailed departmental work, come to an underlying estimate of what what resources would come available. So it's not, it's not so much that 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 reassessment of actual budget to actual spending isn't normal. It's the the key is that there is not necessarily, particularly with regards to twenty-three and twenty-four, which we'll discuss a bit later, there's not really a formal plan of how that how that that number is going to be impacting individual departments. And as I noted, for twenty twenty-two, there is the list, and it's largely representing council ads from the twenty, in the twenty twenty-two budget. So in that sense, there is some form of a plan, though. It's it's not clear, particularly for twenty-three and twenty-four, how the underspend will be met. And it's not a budget cut, it's just really a a commitment that spending will come in lower than budget.
Yeah, okay, thanks so much. And we can come back to that. I think on slide seventeen, we'll get into more of those details. I I want to encourage folks to take a look at attachment B. As Tom noted, this is the attachment that will see a number of the priorities from the twenty twenty-two budget that we passed last year around this time. That included a number of council priorities. I think that there was a good faith and honest effort with the executive to try to identify a handful of priorities, especially priorities of council that could potentially be put on hold, given the budget crisis. I think the question that we're going to all have to grapple with is those priorities totaling up to twenty million squarely being council priorities being put on hold and balancing that hold action in twenty twenty-two with what we will talk about later, which is tens of millions of dollars of investments in new spending and new priorities that don't align with what was even funded last year. So I want to flag that for a conversation to come up and probably on slide number seventeen, if not throughout our deliberations. Councilmember Nelson, did you have a question on these slides?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but so this one seventy-one, that is what we then start twenty twenty-three with, right?
Right.
Well, then what happens, what happens to our operating deficit of one hundred and one? Because if I look back on on slide two, the twenty, I realize this was the August seventeenth projection, but same thing, there's a there's an ending budgetary balance in this case of one eighty-four, which then goes to the top, you know, that's the starting budgetary balance. But we had an operating deficit of eighty-nine million then. So how? What's going on with our deficit every year? How can we?
Well, the, I would just note that the twenty twenty-two number is is the revised budget number.
Yeah, I get that.
Right. And so it's really kind of not indicative of the future sustainability because you need to look in twenty-three and twenty and and beyond.
So will the starting, will the starting, will the starting budgetary balance of twenty twenty-three be one hundred and seventy-one million?
Correct. Yeah, and we will cover that in in the next two slides.
All right. Ally, I think you understand my question.
Yeah, or I'll let me give it a shot, Councilmember Nelson. I think that one of the important things with this ending fund balance or the starting fund balance is this is representing, in most cases, one-time resources from underspend or revenues coming in the previous year over the the budgeted amounts and and carry forward in that sort of thing. What we are seeing happening in the long-term plan is that as there are decisions to sort of reduce some baseline expenditures in certain areas, except all vacancy savings in the proposed budget, that there is less likelihood that we'll have such significant amounts of underspend or new or revenues that come in higher than projections that are available to balance. So that's why you see in twenty-three about a seventeen million dollar problem at the end of the day that we discussed in August, but it gets much worse in the long term. So we can, you know, we can balance twenty twenty-three, but it gets more difficult in twenty-four and twenty-five because we've depleted that large sort of one-time fund balance to balance twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Does does that help?
Great. I'm seeing nods and thumbs up. Okay, great. Thanks for the clarification. Let's continue on.
So now we're going to jump into discussions of the actual proposals for twenty-three and twenty-four. And this starts on page ten and goes through to page twelve of the memo and covers the the revenue changes. And so the numbers are going to be in the context against the baseline financial plan that was discussed in August that were indicating the projected deficit in those discussions. So the first are fairly some some smaller magnitude changes, some really just technical items based on FAS's work, items that really should have been included in the baseline forecast but weren't. That's one point six in twenty-three and one point nine million in twenty twenty-four. There are also some expended, some revenue increases that that are come packaged with expenditure increases. So this is going to represent some grant, grant funds that are received in the mayor's office that are then supporting programs, as well as some support for animal control officers in the general fund in FAS that are supported with transfer from the Seattle Parks District. So that's the revenue in to support a higher expenditures. And then finally, and this will be covered in more detail later on in the discussion about other funds, there is about two point one million dollars in both twenty-three and twenty-four that are generated from increasing the administrative fees for the short-term rental program and the transportation network company program. And so those are, those costs right now are currently covered from other general fund revenues. And so these these increases would increase the cost of recovery of the program. And if we could look at the next slide, we'll cover the kind of the more significant moves. So within the kind of higher level budget changes, ninety-four point six million and ninety-three million dollars are around different treatment of the jumpstart fund transfers to the general fund. These are done, well, the first two are largely done within the allocation of the jumpstart fund's use for administrative program costs, which are five percent of of the jumpstart resources. The first is a three million dollar transfer in that is intended to support existing costs in the city. And so it's it's they're not specifically detailed, but it's part of our our sort of normal administrative costs in the city, and they will be rerun the the rate models to determine where those specific costs are specifically allocated to address those underlying GF costs. The next piece is actually an increased transfer in to support new administrative costs that are added in detail, I believe, in attachment F of the of the memo. This is five point eight million dollars in twenty-three and six million dollars in twenty-four. And each of these sports new new programs in each year of the biennium that are then supported with this transfer from the jumpstart fund. And then the final change is a transfer from the jumpstart fund to the general fund for a revenue backfill. And so I think in the prior discussion, the prior question from Councilmember Nelson, this is one of the key differences, is that in the twenty twenty-two budget, jumpstart fund was was including, was transferring resources under the existing policy, which allowed a level of jumpstart transfer at a certain general fund threshold. However, that threshold had been met for twenty twenty-three, and so that transfer would go away. The proposed change in budget legislation submitted by the mayor would and we'll cover this in a bit more detail on the next slide, would would make a policy change to allow for a level of transfer to continue. In terms of the budget, the transfer is one time of eighty-four point one million dollars in twenty-three and or eighty-five million dollars in twenty-three and eighty-four point one in twenty twenty-four. However, the the actual proposed policy change is slightly different than the way the numbers are applied in the budget. If we could look at the next slide, we'll talk talk a bit about about the differences and that and how the numbers are used versus how the the proposed change is applied. So if we could turn to the next slide.
We on the right slide, Tom?
No, I need to. Is this the right slide? Maybe maybe the prior slide. Okay, here we go. Thank you. So this just goes into a bit more detail on the jumpstart revenue backfill transfer to the general fund. So the proposal that's submitted with the budget would change the ordinance to instead of to change the ordinance to allow for a transfer to continue in twenty-three and twenty-four. And frankly, the the proposal would make that that change permanent, and it would then tie that the transfer to inflation. Later on in the presentation, particularly with regards to the discussion around the jumpstart fund, there will be more detail provided about the specific numbers. However, I just know at a high level, the numbers that are included in the budget for twenty-three and twenty-four are lower than what would be allowed by the policy. The essentially, the inflation adjustment is is greater than what the amount that's budgeted in the in the general fund in the proposal.
That's lower than what would be allowed for in the proposed policy that the mayor has transmitted to council to go along with this proposed budget, correct?
Correct. So the the actual dollar amount is lower in twenty-three and twenty-four. And and the proposed, the proposed policy change in the proposed ordinance would allow that to continue in future years as well. However, in the budget as submitted, they've only programmed that on a temporary one-time basis in twenty-three and twenty-four. And there's a there's a part of issue identification, we'll we'll discuss alternatives to that approach. But but that's how it's it's packaged at this time. And I just I've just pointed out for for the benefit of the committee that the rationale, the reasoning for the need for a backfill transfer to the general fund is largely due to shortfalls in some policy-related revenues. And and really, this, these bullets here and as included in the memo are are just lifting information that was provided by the Office of Economic Revenue Forecast and CBO when they presented their their forecast to the Finance Committee in in August and talks about the the areas of the general fund revenue portfolio that are lagging, lagging behind, because there are in fact some categories, sales taxes and BNO taxes in particular, that are, that are actually outpacing forecasts that were available prior to the pandemic. But these these categories, which represent a fairly large share of the budget, include property taxes, which are are really not grown by inflation, but rather by a policy constraint in in state law that limits it to one percent plus the value of new construction. So it's not necessarily consumer inflation that drives that growth, but rather that growth in new construction. And then permit fees, service charges and other revenues, which are fourteen percent of the revenues, these are really driven by policy factors, things like cost recovery, minimization of collection of of late late payments and things like of that nature. So so they're not really also, I mean, they can be driven by policy, by inflation, but though that that inflationary adjustment would take place largely through some policy, policy change to the level of fee being assessed. And then similarly, public utility taxes, which which can grow by inflation, but it's an indirect method through growth in the in the policy decisions about rate choices that are made for utilities in cities like Seattle Public Utilities. So so they're not really directly linked to inflation. Making the change as proposed would would be then applying by way of this transfer, a kind of standard inflationary adjustment to the jumpstart transfer to to remedy some other structural stability issues in the revenue portfolio that are not linked to inflation. Not that it's inherently a bad thing, it's just a sort of a correcting one one problem with a with a different solution. But but it is certainly certainly an approach that can be taken. I just wanted to point out the kind of what what's kind of going on under the hood.
Thank you so much, Tom. And we are going to pause here for questions. Colleagues, again, this afternoon, from two to four, we will spend a lot of time going into the details of what is being proposed, either to fundamental changes, to spending plans codified and corresponding with revenue streams, including jumpstart progressive payroll tax, the transportation network company, TNC tax and the short-term rental tax. But I do want to pause here for some questions, just so that we understand what is being summarized in pages nine through there, excuse me, nine through twelve of the memo, nine through twelve of the memo. And recognize that we'll have a lot of time this afternoon to get into some of the maybe more detailed questions about the impact of some of those changes. But clarifying questions on pages nine through twelve of the memo, please go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Chair Mosquera.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta, Tom, thanks so much for this. Explanation of the challenges that we all know exist with our ability to generate revenue to pay for the things that we need to do. Are there other, aside from these kind of policy-related constraints that are placed on us? Are there other elements that we should sort of daylight as we are talking about? You know, what you describe here as inherent issues with our financing structure. We know, we know about some of the constraints with how we generate revenue, but are there other things that we have been doing? As we, as we move through these budget processes that we should be aware of and contemplate changing as we move forward. So that we can increase our security and sustainability and stability of, of our, our budgeting process.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Morales, the. I think one of the things that we are doing is actually was started in finance committee this year, which is doing, taking a long-term view. And really focusing ahead of the budget process on what that view looks like. So that, so that the under, underlying rates of growth and expenditures and, and revenues can be clearly identified. And so, because that really, that really identifies when, when challenges. Are beginning to arise and so that they can be addressed sooner rather than later. I would note that looking at proposed budgets, proposed budgets as far back as twenty seventeen indicated a, a future year deficit. It was small, however, instances of the pandemic exacerbated that problem. And, and, and really, I'm kind of upset the apple cart, so. It's like understanding the fragility of the system when it's easier to make change. Is, is beneficial versus kind of taking a more reactive approach. I don't have any kind of quick fixes to offer about how, how to remedy that. And again, the proposal is, is one, one remedy for, for that. There also is the discussion about new progressive revenues that will be uncovered. And as Chair Mosqueta mentioned, with the Revenue Stabilization Task Force, that will kind of take a more deeper dive into this exact question. So that's what I would all.
Really appreciate that question, Councilmember Morales, and I think that that's something that would be a useful north star as we think about how we address the proposed budget. Not just the concerns that we have for the. Immediate quote-unquote solutions that have been proposed, but also what do we want to do to create greater stability over the next six, six years? That will be, I think, one of the goals that I have as well, so thank you for lifting that up here. Ally, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta, I think Tom highlighted this a bit, but I would just reiterate continuing to support. And encourage and provide oversight on the work the city budget office is undertaking. You know, starting this year, but really more in earnest going into next year and looking at. Really tracking budget to actuals and departments and really looking at where spending is happening and working to address. Our personnel system and how we're tracking positions and vacancies and funding for, for those positions. So I would encourage you all to, to stay on that and support that work because it will help identify where there are. Perhaps efficiencies that can be achieved within the existing budget. To try to avoid a situation where the, the city is faced with making significant cuts to programs and services.
Yeah, I'll also add to that, I think we spent quite a bit of time in the September twenty-eighth meeting. Appreciating that Director Julie Dingly was really taking that charge, that need seriously. She did indicate in that meeting that the actual systems, the technology to help better track in real time were maybe a few years out. So in lieu of having a technological solution, we need the answers now. And I think we're all on the same page in, in terms of wanting that. I think that the, the message from Deputy Director Pinucci as well is how do we bake that accountability into our budgeting process? You know, we spent a lot of time talking about vacant positions that were receiving funding. A lot of those discussions centered around the Seattle Police Department. But what we've discovered in the last two years is that those vacant positions and sort of ongoing. Investments in positions that were not filled or never going to be filled. Was actually a practice among many departments, so this is really the first time that I think the budget is being presented in a way that shows. Where those vacant positions are, how money is either being shifted back to the general fund to then be spent on something else or shifted within the department. That level of transparency is important, it's obviously the tip of the iceberg in times of, in terms of the type of transformation. Or, or reform in our budgeting process that we'd like to see across departments and into the future. Until we can systematize the, the approach of having real-time information about where there's unspent money so that we can act with urgency. But I, I appreciate all those points that were made by Councilmember Morales and the direction from Central Staff. I do want to just ask one question. And again, encourage folks, pages nine through twelve, if you have additional questions before we move on. Our goal in the next hour and fifteen minutes will be to get to slide number twenty-five. So if you have questions after the set of slides that Central Staff presents. Of course, feel free to raise those with the recognition that we're going to get more into the details. Here this afternoon, starting at two P M. On these. General fund adjacent revenue streams, including the TNC tax, short-term rental and jumpstart. That said, I, I do have a question, Tom, that I'd like to ask you to lift up a little bit more. You started to explain sort of the uniqueness of applying an inflationary adjustment to a revenue stream. And if we look at the bottom of page eleven and the top of page twelve, you talk a little bit about how. It is not congruent with what we see in terms of where growth occurs. It says on the bottom of page eleven, it's worth noting that one key reason that some of the general fund revenues have not recovered fully since twenty nineteen. Despite growth and inflation is because they do not grow commensurate with inflation. And it goes on to say that as much as fifty-two percent of the general fund revenue portfolio grows at a different rate than inflation. The top of page twelve notes. The proposed policy change to increase the level of revenue augmentation from jumpstart fund could result in permanently backfilling. Revenue losses that are due to non-inflationary factors in other funds. Put another way, the jumpstart fund transfer would be permanently solving sustainability issues inherent within the existing general fund financing structure. That when the payroll tax was passed, it was not the intent to supplant funding and the right, it was the intent of providing net new investments beyond urgent needs of COVID nineteen emergency. And it's important to highlight that factor. Just wanted to lift up this section because it is going to be core cornerstone to our analysis of what types. If any, what types of changes are being considered by this council and the impact of future years. And I'd like for just a second for you to ask you if you have anything that you'd like to add. To that in terms of how we would see jumpstart permanently solving sustainability issues. Or problems within our existing general fund structure before we move on.
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you for that question. The, it's, it's really a matter of. And I believe I explained it previously, there are some categories of our revenues that because of higher inflation are, are doing better. But sales tax and business and occupancy ta, occupations tax in particular. The, the problem is these other categories kind of detailed in this slide. They don't grow by inflation and, and never, and never did. And in many cases, the, the policies that have impacted them, that may, may make the growth lag. Are, are not solved by inflation, so permit fees, for example, a permit is, is intended to recover costs. Of the service that's being provided, so there may be some exercise that whereby the, those permit fees could be adjusted to better recapture the cost. At a, at a very high level. And similarly, public utility taxes, or if there were the rate adjustments that were, that were delayed and not applied. In, in twenty twenty-one for, for good policy reasons. To, to, you know, to minimize the impact, the financial impact on, on rate payers. Because there is a, a general fund tax on these utilities. The general fund revenue was impacted by those, by those changes. And it's not necessarily in, you know, an indictment of the decision, but it's just showing a key distinction of that, that those. And some of those declines are, are because their policy, there are policy reasons behind them. And it, and it's, again, it's, it's not to say that it's not. A legitimate approach to take, but it's just highlighting that. Just applying it, this, this inflationary adjustment measure to the jumpstart transfer kind of. Covers over what the impacts of those policy adjustments were earlier in the pandemic and why the RIO's revenues are essentially lagging. And, and it would, and then in the policy change, as I mentioned, it's, it's a permanent adjustment, so. And it's at a higher level that's built into the budget, so it's just kind of a. Something to note in, in contemplating that decision and, and possible alternatives.
Thank you so much, Tom, I think we can go ahead and move on.
So this is just a stopping off point before looking at expenditures. What happens to the ending balance after just applying these revenue changes? And, and as you can see, the ending fund balance is, is positive, would be sixty-six million dollars at the end of twenty-three. And, and six point eight million dollars at the end of twenty-four. But again, this is, this is just a kind of a signpost along the path of the, this general fund financial planning. But I just wanted to give that update of what, what the balance looked like. And if we can then move to the next slide, we'll get into a discussion about the proposed expenditure changes. And, and I believe we touched on this a bit earlier, but there are kind of two key elements of, of the expenditure side of the budget. One is the, the proposed appropriated adjustments that are in the mayor's budget. And then also there are the kind of non-appropriate elements, the things that are, that are included in, in the, in the executives' budget materials. As key as draws on the resources that are available, but are not actually part of the appropriated budget. So by way of describing and discussing the expenditure changes. The detail of which is in pages twelve through fifteen of the memo. And, and with supplementary tables that are included as an attachments, C through E of the memo. Will cover kind of the, the high-level moves in terms of expenditures. So in reference to the baseline numbers that were discussed earlier in the presentation. The proposed budget would increase total general fund expenditures by seventeen million dollars in twenty-three and forty million dollars in twenty-four. There, there were some very minor baseline corrections that were submitted by CBO after the numbers that they provided in August. A, a little under, a little under a million dollars in twenty-three and a bit under two million dollars in twenty twenty-four. That were just really coding errors that, that were made and, and they also had lowered their, their retirement contribution rate assumption. And so just applied those just adjustments to the base. In terms of more kind of policy and technical items, there are a total of, and I, and so I guess I should explain. I'm going to handle this in a three-step process. First, I'm going to talk about the kind of reductions writ large, then talk about the ads. Kind of separately and then, and then follow, and then conclude with a description of what that happens on a net basis. And then provide a, a kind of an overview of what that means for each individual department. So in terms of the, the actual reductions, there was seventy-one point million dollars of reduction in twenty-three. And fifty-one point six million dollars of reductions in twenty-four, which is about four and a half and three point two percent of those, those years' budgets respectively. Within those amounts, the cuts that are ongoing in twenty-three are thirty-four million dollars. And, and thirty point six million dollars in twenty-four. And I, I pointed out the differential between ongoing and one time. Because the, any cuts that are ongoing in nature continue into future years and they have an impact on the sustainability analysis. And these are all detailed in the memo in attachments. This one is the attachment C, which shows a summary by department and then shows the actual detailed cuts that are applied in most each, in each of those departments. If we could go to the next slide. This is the, the increases, the increased side of the. Equation, and I'll just highlight it, I, I said, three buckets, there is an actual fourth bucket and this is shifts. So there are a total of twenty-three million dollars of cost neutral shifts. So this analysis is at the general fund level of which there are multiple dark departments that are receiving funding from within that higher level total. That these shifts are, are, are more important and I don't want to minimize the impact and the policies that are implicit within them. But at a high level, general fund analysis perspective, they're cost neutral, they have, they have zero impact on the, on sustainability and on the total budget. But there are twenty-three million dollars of these changes of funding between departments. And those are detailed in a table and in the memo, trying to find it. On page fourteen. And it shows you the, the, the department that is, the monies are shifting out of and the departments that are receiving. And each one of these will be covered in, in subsequent. Department level issued papers and presentations later this week. And so finally, there, there are appropriation increases in the budget of a hundred, or eighty-four point two million dollars in twenty-three. And eighty-eight point three and twenty-four, which are about four and a half percent of each year's general fund baseline budget. And then again, getting to the sustainability focus, that those, of those increases in twenty-three, it's sixty-six and a half million dollars is ongoing, so it will continue into future years. And eighty-two point six, so most of the twenty twenty-four adjustment is ongoing in the proposed budget. And that's, that's key because that means that those costs will continue into twenty-five and, and the future. And I believe these adjustments are similarly detailed in the memo in attachment, attachment D. So it shows the summary by department and then the individual items of increase. If we look at the next slide. So this is, as promised, the kind of tracking graph of where the kind of on net. So taking the, taking both the decreases and the adds, and I believe this was covered in the, in the CBO presentation in, in a different way. But this kind of teases out. Where, where, where the cuts are hitting the most and where the ads are then being applied. So as you can see, that the Seattle Police Department receives the largest net cut of twelve point two million dollars. Finance General, which is sort of the kind of reserve structure for the general fund where monies are held. To supply transfers to other funds for central costs and for other items that are, that are being planned and deliberated during the year. That's similar to being reduced by nine point two million dollars in the budget, and then with a, a number of other departments. And I would note, as you see, what noted below, that this does not include the impact. Of cost neutral shifts within the general fund between departments. And this principally will impact, I mean, this display, the Seattle Police Department because there is. The, the issue of the, the Park and Enforcement Officers Division shifting between S dot and. The Seattle Department of Transportation and the Seattle Police Department, so this nets that out to show how the budget for twenty twenty-three looks. And I'm only showing twenty twenty-three because the, the council, the, the city's biennial budget approach. Adopts a twenty-three budget and then endorses the twenty twenty-four, so, so. Just to make it simple, just showing the, the twenty twenty-three proposed budget that would be adopted. And the level of decrease. And then the next slide shows at a, again, department level where the increases are being applied on net. So in this slide, you can see that the Human Services Department is receiving a seventeen point million dollar increase above baseline budget in twenty-three. And then the Seattle Department of Transportation is receiving eight point nine and kind of the other side of the, the explanation, the S dot. S dot amount does not include the impact of the, the kind of general fund neutral shift of the PEO function between S, S dot and S P E. And again, all of this information is detailed in the memo, it's sort of a technical guide as you have. Deliberations and review of, of department budgets in the next few days. But it's, it's all, it's all there and available to kind of help understand. Within the details of what's going on, what the broadings are in the department budgets.
Tom, quick clarification on this slide, I think one could look at the Human Services Department up there and think. Oh, good, the Human Services Inflationary Adjustment has been included in the proposed budget. But would you say the actual, the largest increase in the Human Service Department here? May fall under the category of. may fall under the category of addressing encampments and cleanup? Is that where you're seeing the proposed Unified Care Team being slotted in? Is that why there is such a large increase in that section?
Thank you for the question, Council Chair Musqueta. I I don't need the details. I'd have to refer back to the the technical guide. Though I do know that if this is this is net of the decrease to to provider costs that that were discussed. But as far as what the individual lines are, and that would be detailed in attachment D.
Great, and a good reminder for our colleagues, including myself, that department specific questions, we are going to have the chance to ask the departments in addition to central staff who's focusing on these issue areas over the next three days, and HSD, for example, will be covered on Friday morning.
Chair Musqueta, I would just add that, yeah, those details will be covered more, and as you said, in the HSD presentation, but I do think your description is accurate, that this is generally reflecting some of the new proposed spending in the areas of some of the the shelter and RV as well as the, well, yeah, those two, those two items primarily, and it doesn't reflect the inflationary adjustment, as Tom noted.
Great. I think I interrupted you, Tom, but as I did, let me turn it over to Councilmember Nelson for clarifying question as well.
As the, it looks like the the table in attachment D says that the Unified Care Team is two hundred and ninety five thousand, I guess. So just for your reference, that is less than a lot of the other increases, like I don't know, you can just, you can look on page two of the attachment D and see the increases to the Human Services Department.
Well, the Unified Care Team is much larger than two hundred and some thousand dollars. So we, I'll I'll pause here for a second to see if central staff has anything they'd like to add for context, but again, we'll be able to get into those questions specifically on amounts within the HSD section on Monday or Friday morning, followed by the proposed Unified Care Team discussion following the HSD section. Please go ahead, Director Handy.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the Amy Gore on our team will break all of this out on Friday morning. The items related to the Unified Care Team include the expansion of the System Navigators Team and the Unified Care Team, which are just over a million dollars combined as part of that expansion. And that of this seventeen million, some of it is also around community safety initiative and programs like this. So we'll be digging into sort of the variety of items. The seventeen million is is not the inflationary increase, which is part of the base, and and this would have been bigger had all of it been included in the budget.
Thanks so much. Councilmember Peterson, I see you next. And then I have a question that I want to circle back on the HSD inflationary adjustments, just to ground us as well as we head into the next few days. Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Musqueta. Question for central staff regarding these last two slides here where the footnote says compared to the August seventeen baseline is is another way of describing that the what would be called twenty twenty two revised or twenty twenty two actual. I just trying to understand what you're comparing it to from twenty twenty two.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Peterson. It's a it's important point. So the the twenty of the the twenty three and twenty four baseline budgets are essentially the the cost of providing the services that were adopted in the twenty twenty two budget. So it's essentially a refresh saying we there was an adopted service level in twenty twenty two. What does it cost provide that level of service in twenty three and twenty four? And so it's a it's kind of a department level process run by CBO where they look at all those central costs, apply inflation as necessary, look at at current law, what what areas of the budget are are just naturally growing based on 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 new ordinance and applying those adjustments. So it's not necessarily a twenty twenty two revised, but it's a the twenty three cost that providing twenty twenty two level of services.
I saw. Thank you. Okay, great. I'm getting better at reading lips, which is hard to do with a mask on. Because our chambers are near empty and it's easier to probably see what I'm saying. I'm going to remove my mask when I speak most times unless we have a full audience here. Okay, I did want to just follow up very briefly. We do have about an hour left and less than ten slides, so I'm going to just take a quick second to ask central staff and perhaps Esther or Ally. Tom, of course, feel free to add to this. But you started to talk about the HSD provider contracts, and it is included as a footnote on page thirteen of the memo, recognizing that the base corrections include revisions to the human service provider contracts, which were included as a baseline change in the CBO's materials, but are not, but but are included in the proposed appropriation decrease section of the analysis. Just to remind us of what all this public testimony is, could you please explain again, why those human service provider contract inflationary adjustments were not included in the base budgets? And I believe, Tom, in your memo, you said your analysis found that they that inflationary adjustment wasn't included going back to twenty nineteen when the statute was passed. So can you elaborate for us just a little bit more since we continue to receive calls and emails and obviously public testimony today? And on the twenty eighth about this concern, why wasn't that inflationary adjustment that's codified in statute included in the base budget originally?
Thank you, Chair Musqueta. So I I there's a distinction between including in the budget and including in the financial plan that I would that I would kind of elevate. So since adoption, the amounts have been included in proposed budgets. What what they haven't been done and what I highlighted through my analysis on the material presented at the seventeenth is that they had not been included as as a growth assumption in future years. So the given that they look of at the sustainability, the fund requires looking at how costs grow in the future. Essentially, what the exercise was is looking at the baseline adjustments that CBO had put in for baseline changes in twenty three and twenty four, which included the contract provider cost growth. However, noticing that there was no inflationary growth being applied in twenty five and twenty six, so that made the projected costs of the general fund lower than they would have been if those measures that are in 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 ordinance had been applied. So it was really more of a a adjustment, technical adjustment to the financial plan. I I don't I don't know exactly the mechanisms by which those weren't included in prior plans. But they are, they had been included in the budget and they were included in the baseline budget numbers that we discussed on the seventeenth. The footnote in the memo, which you lifted up, is is really highlighting the technical aspect. And that's something that I noticed in in the reviewing of the budget detail was that the CBO made a change, that proposed change, which is corollary with the proposed policy changes that had been submitted with budget legislation that would cap the fees at four percent. They coded that that change that would be effective through that policy choice as a baseline change. And so I separated that piece out because in in my view, that is a policy change and not just purely a baseline technical adjustment. So that that kind of explains the the reasoning why that that footnote is included just to kind of signal a a different treatment of of that number, because it does show as a baseline adjustment in CBO's presentation of the budget to also and then to also indicate that the the key finding that I had from the seventeenth was that they just hadn't been growing the the costs in the future years as as they should have been growing. So I hope that helps to explain the kind of technicalities around that. But then also to help understand what the policy, like what the 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 policy decision is inherent in the budget.
It does help a lot, and thank you for that clarification that it was in the financial plan, the six year outlook, that the cost of living adjustment was not included. So I appreciate that. And I do want to thank you. I believe it was Tom Mikesel from central staff who really identified that in that six year financial plan earlier this year that the cost of living adjustment was not included. So that was a very important find from central staff, highlights the importance of having our team on central staff really be able to pull through the materials and work in collaboration with CBO to underscore issues or concerns they see, and then jointly, we can more proactively address some of these issues. But Tom, thanks for your early analysis on that and helping to really lift that up in early review of the budget and for the clarification you've offered here. Okay, I see two more hands. Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thank you. As it relates to the six year financial plan, what is what is council's role? I thought I remembered hearing a few months ago that that we are we have sort of a consulting, not a consulting role, but we can give input to that plan. It's is there a way that we could formalize that in the future so that if we are, before the budget's announced, briefed on a six year plan that does not include particular policies and adherence with 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 laws that we've passed that we can we could provide. I I know that the council in 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 past years used to pass a budget priorities resolution. We don't do that anymore, but if 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 we are aware because we see this the six year financial plan and we see in advance that there are some key planning priorities that aren't being adhered to. It would be great if there was a way to sort of avoid us being in the position that we're in now by being able to use whatever input opportunities we have to that plan.
Councilmember Herbold, if I might take that that question, I think there is work we can do to continue to partner with CBO to improve the financial plan. That's really what we have been doing this year by by digging in more to the financial plan and identifying these details. I just want to clarify that. And that is, in fact, how we have incorporated the assumptions about the inflationary adjustments into the financial plan. Central staff did that first in May, when we presented an updated updated financial plan, and it was also an assumption included in the financial plan presented in August. What we can't control is other choices between those presentations and when the mayor prepares the budget of other policy choices they make in order to balance and pay for their priorities. So in this case, I would suggest that in it it the the work to dig into that that the council is doing to provide more oversight on the financial plan throughout the year is the mechanism to get them to incorporate more of that. And we could talk offline about other ways to make that more clear, but generally speaking, I would say that the financial plan should incorporate any laws that have been passed that have costs associated with them. And again, we're continuing to work with CBO to refine their approach as well as our approach to to financial planning.
Thank you. Love that. Love that question by Chair, and it's also a great way for me to plug the March, excuse me, the May fourth memo as well, which really highlighted in the previous two budgets. We had seen this financial plan buried on pages, you know, seven hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty in previous iterations. So we're really doing, I think, a a good job here. You colleagues are doing a great job of lifting up what is in the financial plan in the next six years so that we can both address that as well as biennial budget challenges. So thanks for your work already in this year's deliberations, but also in the last two years as well. Really appreciate that being more of a cornerstone of our discussions. Councilmember Nelson, back to you.
Yeah, Tom, you said that the the proposed budget back in in August did not include the cost of living adjustment. Did it include the cap? I mean, did it include an adjustment that would be the four percent that we see in this proposed budget, or does it just did not have any increase whatsoever? And so I'll just answer.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. The so the May, the May fourth financial plan did not include the adjustment.
Any at all.
We caught the most likely no. The in the future years, we caught the discrepancy in the transition between the twenty or the May plan and the August plan by way of having access to the baseline adjustments information that CBO was applying to the budget. And so just kind of to to add to Deputy Director Pinucci's comments, this is part of the kind of improvement process that's been underway. There was actual a resolution that was sponsored by Chair Musqueta in the twenty twenty one budget that sort of provided the entree for closer coordination on these financial planning details. And so that's where the fruit is being born. The the twenty seventeen, the August seventeenth numbers did include deflationary adjustment, the full measure of the inflationary adjustment that was indicated in statute, but it did not include the the new proposal that's packaged in the budget, which would then cap those increases at four percent. So so the the twenty seventeen number was the actual adjustment for ordinance, but it didn't include the new proposal, which is now embedded in the twenty three, twenty four proposed budget.
And I would just add just for the record, directly Director Dingly has been clear that this was not an intentional an intentional miss in the the financial plan, a a choice to leave it out of the projected long term expenditures. And that since we have been engaging in these deeper dives with the financial planning exercise with the city budget office, they have not objected in any way to including it. Again, we take slightly different approaches, but again, it wasn't you know, she's been very clear that this was not an intentional decision to not include those assumed costs in the in the out years. And since then, have adjusted their their financial plan to include those assumed costs now at the four percent level in twenty five and twenty six or beyond the biennium. And so it is now embedded into the financial plan that CBO transmitted for the twenty three and twenty four proposed budget.
Great. Thank you for that addition. Thank you for the clarifying questions, colleagues. And yes, would just underscore the point that we tried to make on the twenty eighth of September as well. There is a huge amount of appreciation for the transparency with the new director of CBO, the willingness to provide another layer, another few layers of information that has not been previously provided to central staff. And because of that, we were able to collectively identify the the missed inflationary adjustment in the out years. So really appreciate that level of transparency, especially in looking at the financial plan. And also want to underscore that as we are critical of maybe policy decisions that we distinguish between, you know, routine, regular quarterly analysis of both the financial plan and presentation versus policy decisions that the executive may have chosen to make in the upcoming budget. That would that would be more where the four percent cap policy decision was made by the executive versus, you know, the six year financial plan deliberations and and analysis earlier in the year. So thank you for that clarification. And really appreciate the ongoing work that we've begun with CBO to get additional information to central staff to to dissect the budget in further detail. Great, we have forty minutes left in this section. Let's continue on.
Okay, if we could move to the next slide. So this, we've now talked about the a kind of appropriated changes. So what is included in the actual budget proposed? So the ordinance change. But as as we had discussed earlier, there are non-appropriated elements. The there are two two categories of these non-appropriated changes. One is a, again, a commitment to underspend ten million dollars in twenty three and twenty four. So this is not in any form a permanent reduction to any budgets. It's just saying that in twenty three total total general fund spending would be ten million dollars less. There's no detailed plan behind it. Just want to again touch back to the the way that the twenty twenty two underspend was met, which was largely through holding expenditures on council priorities. It just kind of as a a signal of how at least that amount was was met of underspend. No indication that that is specifically going to be the case in twenty three or twenty four. I'm just, you know, kind of highlighting highlighting past practice. But again, this is not part of the appropriate budget. So the ordinance that the council will ultimately revise and adopt does not include an actual a ten million dollar reduction for this change. It's just a financial plan estimate that they've included. Um and then similarly, in the non-appropriated category, uh we discussed much um this morning, the the planning reserves. So these are the kind of below the line non-appropriated reserves that are in the in the plan. Um they were reduced those amounts by twenty-eight point six and thirty point nine million dollars. Um we typically don't discuss what the nature of those changes are, so I cannot offer much detail, but they do have um a a uh a positive impact in terms of the general fund financial plan because they bring down total cost. Um and and there's there are issues um identified in the issue ID section about um these these two particular adjustments and um alternative ways that they can be um handled in the budget.
Tom, just on this slide briefly, um you 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 highlighted past practices. Have we balanced the budget in previous years based on as su- assumed underspend? Can you talk about the risk of doing so?
Not that I'm familiar with. Um of course, they know the broad reach of history is is longer and perhaps I wouldn't have captured anything, but um we we haven't been provided in any information that this is a a common uh practice that's applied. So again, it's 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 a somewhat of a um projecting forward thing. It's not even similar to the twenty-twenty-two review that I discussed where departments are kind of asked to reestimate their spending based on, you know, some experience in the fiscal year. This is kind of just looking forward saying of the total budget, we will spend ten million dollars less, though it's on, it's not specifically determined where where that will occur at at any at any level of detail.
You you sort of trailed off there at the end. I think that's a really important point, and I think Deputy um Director Panucci, that was part of the questioning that I had before, and maybe you can elaborate on that. I saw your hand up. Any thoughts about this approach?
Um yeah, a councilmember, um I under- I understand the 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 difficult choices that the budget office and the mayor were making as they were trying to balance this budget. Um I'm I would say we haven't identified it at this as a common practice in other cities, and I'm not aware of it happening here. But again, as Tom mentioned, we have not been here for all the budgets um that the city has passed. So it may in fact have been a strategy in the past. I would just note that the risk here is that if you know, we don't um achieve the ten million dollar underspend in twenty-three um or twenty-four, we're we're not going to be able to balance next year, and so there'll be difficult choices and um I would say any of the new spending proposed by the mayor or the council is the in certain ways, the easiest to not spend in any given year for new initiatives or new contracts. However, um the budget office has been clear that their in their intent, their strategy going into next year is not to focus on councilmember budget actions as the strategy to achieve the underspend. But as Tom noted, um it is a possible outcome, frankly, if faced with um, you know, different revenue news in the future or um there are not other ways for the departments to achieve the to achieve the underspend. So I think the risk is um we may be more out of balance or projected to be more out of balance as we go into budget discussions next fall for um adopting the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would actually add, and it's it's all here on the slide, um that as covered uh a few slides earlier, there are some um some reductions, both one-time and ongoing, that are in the proposed budget. But but those dollars are are cutting areas that perhaps are vacancy savings and things of that nature, which would in a normal year be the source of underspend that you would realize in the in in the the general fund. So so it's kind of like the opportunities for realizing the underspend are being cut. Um but then those monies have then been added back in the budget for other things that may not um necessarily have the same kind of natural underspend, meaning like vacancy savings or things like that um that we would normally experience. So so that's kind of enhances the um I guess riskiness of the of the approach um given that that the nature of the cuts and and how they got reused in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
And so that um that covers the non-appropriated changes, which then is takes us to the kind of bottom line results in the financial plan. Um and so this is the um the table that we started with, just looking at years twenty-three and twenty-four. Um and starts with the the uh budgetary, so the starting one-time balance of a hundred and seventy-one million dollars for twenty-three. And then you'll see there are rows for the baseline numbers that were discussed in August. Um and then the proposed changes in the revenue category expenditures, um the underspend, which is kind of shown below the line, and the reserve changes. And so when um under this financial program, um twenty twenty-three would end with a positive general fund balance of eighty-seven million dollars. Um but then by twenty twenty-four, that balance will have been spent down to six thousand dollars. So this would be considered a balanced budget um for these two years. Um given that um there is a positive ending on reserve fund balance. Um but as we'll we'll cover in uh the next section, um there are kind of some sustainability issues that I would highlight.
I think what we'll do, colleagues, is we will get through the next um five slides or so. Let's get to slide twenty-four, twenty-five, and then we'll take all the questions related to the summary of the presentation, if that sounds okay. Okay, and Tom, if you think that a different um pause point makes sense, please let me know.
Will do. So I think we can move down to the next slide. Um and I I kind of I apologize, I lost track of the of the tracking in the memo. I was looking at one of the more detailed attachments. Um we are page seventeen, I believe, of the memo. Um and so this just highlights um the really the 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 focus numbers for this particular presentation, which is the positive ending on the reserve fund balance. And so let's maybe move to the the next slide, and I believe there are some uh issues identified. Um and so this is um one issue is that the proposed proposed underspend amounts are not identified. And so these are um the twenty twenty-three and twenty-four amounts, not identified by program or department, and they don't actually represent a a budget cup of either a temporary or a permanent nature. Um so really, the the options that we would identify is to um look at the uh the new spending that is added um that's detailed on attachment D, um and reject increases totaling ten million dollars of um either temporary or ongoing natures, which would which would codify the ten million dollar underspend. Um another approach would be to just create a line in the finance general budget um of a negative ten million dollars. Um this would be not, you know, it would still suffer from the the same issue of not really identifying where that is occurring at the individual department level, but it would then formally adopt a budget that includes that underspend assumption within it, um which then um through adjustments next year, um the the underspend could be offset with reductions in departments where there's actually underspent budget to fill that obligation. Option C is actually a more uh detailed uh approach, which is to say to look at the reductions that are taking a place at the department level um in identified in attachment C and perhaps increase some level of um of a reduction to some select departments to be kind of a more surgical approach. And then finally, no change um is also um an option.
Let's continue.
Um the next issue is um also something we have covered this morning, which is the way that the budget doesn't include all of the elements of spending, uh most notably of the the underspend, but also the the planning reserves. And and this is really just a a a choice of continue the past practice of not appropriating that full amount um that's covered in the reserves or um as identified in option A to appropriate some portion all or some portion of those planning reserves as a formal line, um perhaps most likely in the finance general reserves um uh portion of the city budget.
And colleagues, I'm just going through these because we're not obviously taking a vote today, but we will have a chance to walk through the next uh three slides here, and then we'll come back for questions. And if folks have comments that they'd like to share with the public, of course, folks are happy to express those or welcome to express those, but let's go through the next uh three slides here.
Okay, uh so this slide um then go um it kind of is the closing the loop on the sustainability um discussion that started in May and continued in August. And then now reflects the changes in the proposed budget. Um as you can see, um well, if you compare back um the at at the August presentation, um it was projecting a a hundred and forty-two million dollar average gap between revenues and expenditures in in each year. Um proposals in the um the mayor's proposed budget would in fact increase that gap to a hundred and ninety-three million dollars per year in twenty-five and twenty-six. Um and you can see that just um very clearly in these in these two lines. Um there are some real key reasons why that um why the um the budget sustainability, why it's getting less sustainable in the future. Um they're detailed on the next slide. Um and this is covered on pages eighteen, page eighteen of the memo. Um so the key factors is one, um as as we discussed, there is a program transfer from the general fund to or from the um jumpstart fund to the general fund of payroll expense tax revenues. Um that's included in the budget at about approximately eighty-five million dollars per year in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um however, it's one time and it terminates in twenty twenty-five. Um so so that um drops, you know, leads to a drop in revenue to the general fund in those in twenty-five and twenty-six. Um again, as mentioned earlier, um a statement of legislative intent um that was passed in twenty twenty-two institutes the uh creation of the Seattle Revenue Stabilization Work Group, which would look at a potential other options um of progressive new revenues for the general fund. Um and I understand that the the discussions with the mayor's office and the budget chair's office are underway to panel that group to begin those discussions. So that um that is maybe fa- one factor that could then enhance the general fund sustainability beyond the um proposed budget. Another uh topic that that we have covered is that um because the underspend assumption is not um ongoing and it's not specifically programmed in the budget, um it's only temporary and one-time in nature. So it only it only provides relief in twenty-five and twenty-six, but not in future years. And then uh finally, a key takeaway is that um amidst all the details of the budget, the the cuts and the ads as previously described, um the general fund budget would actually add a net new fifty-two million dollars ongoing spending in twenty-four and um which is basically the base of growth for for twenty-five and twenty-six. And so um so the budget, because it it does a lot of one-time things to to cut spending, but then repurposes those appropriations in twenty-five and twenty-six for new ongoing spending, it actually increases the the total level of ongoing spending in future years. Um so so those are the key reasons why the the gap um is still present and in fact is growing based on the uh proposed um the proposed um spending in the mayor's budget. Um and then this is the kind of the third uh item of uh that for issue identification. Um in light of that um increases on sustainability of the G- general fund financial plan, we can look at the next slide. It really then um highlights different um different options that we could identify um in light of that growing budget gap. Um one is, and that we and that it was discussed, and and other issue identification is to actually um formally appropriate as ongoing the under underspend assumption of ten million dollars per year. Um reject one or more of the expenditure increases that are ongoing, that are identified on attachment D with the memo or or identify other areas of expenditure reduction um in city programs. Uh another option would be to um to accept the proposal to make the jumpstart funds transfer in future years permanent and tied to inflation beyond the twenty be- beyond twenty twenty-four. Um or alternatively, um to identify a new general fund revenue source to support some or all of the proposed new general fund budget adds, and then finally, uh no change. Because um and this is something that I I that was highlighted in August. Um but it's a key point is that um council is not adopting years twenty-five and twenty-six of the financial plan. That is um truly advisory in nature. Um it's it's kind of a signal uh as to how the decisions that are being contemplated right now would have an impact on finances in the future. Um so as as we demonstrated, the budget is in fact balanced for twenty-three and twenty-four. Um uh and so no change is also an option.
I think so. I think we will pause actually right back at that before we get into section six of the memo. Is that okay?
Sure.
Or do you think that it would be preferable to wrap up section six?
I believe I can cover section six fairly fairly quickly um with the fiscal reserves. So if we can move it to the next slide, um the um as you recall, in the twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget process, there was a reliance on the city's fiscal reserves to um to meet COVID emergency expenses and to provide general budget balance. Um this is just a sort of given those uses to provide some tracking of how the budget replenishes those reserves. And um so what you'll see here is our uh each each of our key reserves, the emergency fund, which is just for un- unexpected expenses, and then rev- revenue stabilization fund, which is available to offset declines in general fund revenues, um both of which were 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 used. However, council did add back um balances in in the twenty-two budget um to replenish those years and also notably um through by way of a supplemental adjustment this year was able to fully replenish the revenue stabilization fund to its full policy level in twenty twenty-two. So um so this this chart or this table just tracks the changes um starting from the twenty-three beginning balance um through the end of twenty twenty-four. And as you can see at the bottom line, that at the end of twenty-four, the emergency fund will be about seventy-eight percent of its policy level. Its policy level is essentially whatever the twenty-six, the twenty sixteen amount was, which is about sixty million dollars um growing by inflation. So again, with the deposits that are planned and the starting balance that we'll have at the beginning of twenty-three, it'll be at seventy percent, a seventy-eight percent of the maximum policy. And then revenue stabilization fund, um really, those are maintenance transfers just to keep up with general growth in um taxes. The revenue stabilization fund cap is five percent of general fund tax revenue. And at the end of twenty-four, and in fact, at the end of twenty-two, it's at a hundred percent of level. Uh so that's just a recap of where we are with reserves. I would just um just be, you know, before closing, say the twenty-three and twenty-four amounts are not specifically um required to be ten million dollars per year. Uh there was a policy change um in the last year's budget that um given the the level of use of the emergency fund during the pandemic, provided for a longer repayment prior to um that change, the requirement was that the emergency fund be a hundred percent replenished at the end of the year. Um given all of the fiscal challenges as previously discussed, um the change that was proposed and was which was adopted by council was to allow for a five-year uh repayment horizon. And so at that time, it was indicated that um to get it back to policy level at the end of twenty twenty-six, it would require ten million dollars per year. And so that's what is included in the budget is uh that is that ten million dollar transfer. However, I would say that the policy would allow for a complete lump sum repayment in the end in twenty and twenty twenty-six of the full amount. So it doesn't provide a specific guidance up to what the cadence of those transfers is. It just says you have five years to get back to policy level by twenty twenty-six. And I believe that concludes um through the through uh section six of the memo before heading into the other policy, other fund issues.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much. Uh colleagues, I'm gonna focus some of my comments and questions on section five. Feel free to get in the queue as well if you have additional questions. Um can we go back a few slides? Uh Tom, I wanna take a look at that graph that you showed, figure number three on page eighteen of the memo.
Hi, councilmembers. If you would like to skip to a slide, I'm actually running the presentations right now. So if you could tell me the exact slide that you would like me to go to, we will get it right there.
Okay, uh we just missed it. It was slide number?
It's slide twenty-two.
Twenty-three. Thank you, Patty. Twenty-two, twenty-two. Thanks so much. Okay, so I wanted to have this visual up here, and I would like a chance, Tom, for you to elaborate on any of the takeaways that I have uh written down here. And colleagues, um this will be this will be a longer conversation than we have time for today. Um but what I heard you mention earlier in the presentation, I believe we're on page thirteen of the memo, is that the cuts in the mayor's proposed budget are one-time in nature. The ads are ongoing. The ads are ongoing. So the seventeen point six million in net new spending in twenty twenty three, the forty million in net new spending in twenty twenty four. Are actually contributing to more a more unsustainable. Fiscal future for the city. And I believe that that's what this chart is suggesting. So could you tell me a little bit more if I've understood your summary of what the one time cuts are? The ongoing ads and if the seventeen point six million in twenty twenty. Three and the forty million in twenty twenty four, as you noted in your. Memo are net new and projected to increase in the future, is that what we're seeing in this chart?
More or less, Chair Musqueta, the so the kind of net overall numbers of seventeen and forty million dollars, seventeen and twenty three and forty in twenty twenty four. Doesn't really touch on the ongoing and. One time nature of what's going on behind the scenes. So at a at a more specific level, and I believe it's highlighted, it's highlighted on the the next slide. When you peel back the layers of the onion, there is fifty two million dollars of ongoing spending that is added. In twenty twenty four that will continue in the future years and so that is, you know, we're peeling back. Because the because the actual level of total cuts and total adds is larger on both sides of the equation. But this targets on the fact that. Amidst all of that balancing work that is taking place in twenty three and twenty four, the mixture of all the. The cuts and the ads and the ongoing and one time nature of all of those, what comes out at at the end of the day is a fifty. Fifty two million dollars, I believe that is the number, correct, fifty two million dollars of just ongoing new spending. That's in the added in the budget in twenty four that will continue in the future years. And so that plus the. Kind of the one time underspend assumption that has helped that has used to help balance twenty three and twenty four, which is not a permanent reduction. And plus the the phase out of the jumpstart transfer in twenty five, those are the key contributors. To why that's occurring, but but yes, it is accurate that. In general, and specifically the budget does add ongoing costs that continues above what the baseline we considered in August.
And on page sixteen, thank you for that clarification and then on page sixteen of the memo. You describe that. Let me quote it here. Further, the proposal does not include details about where the underspend amounts will be realized, so in essence, there's no. Actual details on the IOU that's baked into the budget and as central staff had noted, this presentation and on the twenty eight. There's no. Clarification that the IOU won't be taken from existing council priorities that have already been codified into statute, is that correct?
Chair, Chair Musqueta, I would only, I would say there isn't a specific plan for exactly where those underspends will be achieved, but I will say that. What I have heard clearly from Director Dingly is her current plan is not to hold council member. Action, council budget actions as the strategy to achieve the twenty twenty three. Or twenty four underspend, I think what both Tom and I are suggesting is that, given the. One time and ongoing reductions already assumed in the proposed budget. The executive might may find themselves in a position where new spending is the place to look to to achieve that underspend and that could be either. New spending proposed directly by the council or new spending or adopted by the council or new spending proposed by the mayor that the council accepts. So either holding it back any of that that new spending.
Okay. All right, well, I. I know we are gonna get more into the details specifically on Jumpstart, the transportation network company tax and the short term rental tax this afternoon. I will save some of my questions and concerns on. What options the council may want to consider and obviously I'll signal some of my. Opposition to adopting whole cloth, the proposal that's been sent down to us from. The mayor's office regarding fundamental changes to the calculation for Jumpstart. Including the application of inflationary cost and the. Way in which higher than anticipated revenue is being allocated, we'll have some of those discussions over the next three days. But specifically, I'm going to be looking at. How the codified spend plan is or is not being adhered to, which we will discuss a little bit later this afternoon. Councilmember Nelson, you're up next.
Yeah, we're talking about long term sustainability, but isn't it the case this gap that we're looking at right here? That's not inevitable, so in in. I mean, before we're talking about a new revenue. Source, I think that, you know, our our role right now in the next couple of years is to think about how. How we can address spending so that we don't get to this big gap and so. In in when we're talking about the mayor's increases to the ongoing expenses that are increasing the general fund spending. That's we've also got increases there that are ongoing, so I guess my point is. I'd like to have a, I I'm gonna be looking at how I feel about some of those increases in the mayor's proposed budget that increase the. Ongoing expenses, but. In general, I would say that. It's good to look at this planning and good to think about sustainability, but let's think about also the funds that we've got on our hands right now. Our existing funds instead of thinking about a an ongoing new sorts of revenue.
Thanks for sharing your comment, Councilmember Nelson, I I think just to clarify the the point that. I would like for council members to really take away is the comparison between this slide and slide three. So the question before the council is. Do some of the ways in which the. Fundamental application of taxes. Get changed to create greater instability in the future, is that something that we want to consider and address if we look at the out years? Because if you look at slide three, as Patty is showing on the slide, thank you very much Patty. You can see that there is definitely still an average operating gap of a hundred and forty two million dollars. But if you fast forward again to slide twenty two. You can see that while there's some some short term strategies to mitigate for the biennial crisis. What is being proposed would actually create greater instability in the out years. And that's the biggest takeaway and opportunity for us to analyze, is there an alternative path? The proposed budget is just that proposed. And the council gets the chance to opine on whether or not that instability that we see widening. And the higher amount of the average operating gap in the out years is something that we want to accept. Modify, reject, etc. So that's, I think, an important distinction and I'm glad you raised the issue so that we could really do a comparison between existing status quo. How we address the two year biennial crisis, but in keeping in mind the long term or the six year fiscal outlook.
So the instability is caused by how we spend first and foremost, right?
It's it's detailed in the thirty four pages that we've read about not just the spend side. But the revenues and how the revenues have changed, most notably on some of our existing revenue streams. Coming in lower than anticipated because they're not keeping up with. Needed expenditures, lots of shifts in behaviors in the last few years under the pandemic, so it's not as simple as that, I'm gonna.
You're characterizing that as an instability, but we have control over spending is what I'm just trying to say.
We also have control over how existing revenue streams are applied. I'm gonna move on to the next council member, council member Morales.
Thank you, Chair, I sort of in keeping with the the question that Councilmember Nelson has about this fifty two million. You know, in looking at attachment D and thank you for itemizing this in some some way. There is a significant increase for the Office of Hearing Examiner. And then there are five other departments that have at least double digit increases being proposed. So I wonder if you could give just kind of broadly. What's what those are intended to do and if they, you know, just so we have some sense as we move forward and I know we'll get into the details later, but for today's presentation. What is that fifty two million dollars representing in terms of what we will be doing differently as a city?
Across the entire general fund, I I wouldn't have the detail, I don't. Have that kind of department specific knowledge, I'm looking at it from a broad general fund context. I would say though that much of the the new ads are going to be discussed in departmental presentations and over the next few days. So if there are noteworthy items that are on the table in the attachment. That that beg, you know, further scrutiny and perhaps alternative. Assessments of the level of those increases or whether or not they should be included in the budget at all. That the expertise would be provided at that time by by those analysts who who are the subject matter experts, so. I'm just trying to provide a a broad framework of all the various bits and pieces to provide leads that will then be followed up. And in in discussions over the next couple of days.
And we are very thankful to you for that, Tom. And I would just add that every department, whether or not it has a place on the agenda this week. There will be a central staff paper that will be published to the agenda for tomorrow's. Agenda and where analysts will know where there are sort of changes, you know, for take the example of the Office of Hearing Examiner. The bulk of that is a one time ad that I believe is a technology related investment, so then the new spending is a mix of sort of one time. You know, technology or other needs of a of an office and it looks significant, particularly in a small office like the Office of Hearing Examiner. But it also includes increased investments in human services, the unified care team proposal. Lots of other things that I'm not thinking that will be detailed in many pages of budget overview papers that will be available for you all. To use as reference throughout these discussions posted to the agenda later today.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales for that question, I'm gonna go to Vice Chair Herbl.
Oh, thanks, I just, I do wanna. Go back to the the issue related about. Sustainability and I I just wanna, it's been said before, but I I want to say it again because of the. The comments from. Councilmember Nelson about spending, I think it's really important to look at the revenue side again. The items that were on a prior slide. Represent fifty two percent of the city's revenue. So those revenue sources aren't growing at the rate of inflation. That accounts for fifty two percent of the city's revenue. So it's not just a spending problem, it is inherent to. Some of our sources of revenue that are not do not. By design, do not grow at this at the rate of inflation, so. We could correct this problem tomorrow and we'll have it again next year. Because we, as long as fifty half of more than half of our budget is is relying on these revenue sources. It is a continual going to be a continual problem.
I understand which.
Remember Nelson, I have not, I have not recognized you, Councilmember Nelson.
And I, that was just part of my state, part of my 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 comment, I did wanna also. Ask Tom, as it relates specifically to Jumpstart and the use of Jumpstart. Am I correct in that if we if we, and maybe you've said this, but I I just, I think I wanna make sure. If I'm gonna say it more plainly, I want to make sure I'm correct, does this proposed use of. Jumpstart actually create a situation where the general fund becomes more dependent? On Jumpstart for backfill in the future?
I think, thank you for that question, Vice Chair Herbl. Essentially, essentially, yes, I mean, the the twenty twenty two budget was balanced using a Jumpstart fund contribution. And but that was temporary under the current policy, the proposed budget then. For twenty three and twenty four and continues essentially the same level of transfer from the Jumpstart fund. And then and then includes an assortment of expenditure increases too. And then going in the future and this was one of the. Items, you know, explained and the kind of reasons for the sustainability is that when the Jumpstart transfer drops in twenty five and twenty six. That leads to the the average operating gap continuing and in fact increasing, so. It's it's essentially being used as as a portion of the general fund financial plan in the next two years. And and in that sense, it is supporting the level of general funding spending that is being proposed. So if it's if it's all part of it and it's its presence and lack of presence is part of the sustainability issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, well, colleagues, you have come to the right place if you are interested in continuing to have a dialogue about not just revenue, but also expenses. We are gonna continue this conversation specific to revenue streams, the general fund adjacent revenue streams this afternoon. Please do dial back in at two P M so we can go through the rest of the memo. Again, there is another half of the memo that we have not yet covered, thank you, Tom Meisel, for walking us through the first half here. I also want to acknowledge and thank the mayor's office, Senior Deputy Mayor Monisha Harold and her team for sending out a letter to the council. Which underscores this ongoing shared city interest in identifying stable revenue streams. This is an outcrop of the statement of legislative intent that I sponsored last year with the support of. The city council at the time, SLY zero zero two B zero zero one requesting the mayor to convene a Seattle tax structure. To review the Seattle tax structure and identify ways to make more equitable investments and raise new progressive revenue. This task force will be convened this month and over the course of the next. Six months will make recommendations about new progressive revenue to help offset in whole or in part existing regressive revenues. As well as close the growing revenue deficit, which we spent quite a bit of time talking about today. So thank you very much to the mayor's office for following through and helping to create this. Table in response to the statement of legislative intent last year. And this body is not going to be able to make recommendations for this upcoming biennial budget, obviously. But is tasked with helping to identify sources to help be available beginning in twenty twenty five at the beginning of the next biennial budget, so. Very much appreciate our shared interest and shared commitment to identifying new progressive and stable revenue sources. With that, if there's no objection, we will go ahead and adjourn for today and reconvene at two P M. Oh, are you objecting, Council President?
No, I'm not objecting. I'm I'm gonna end on a thank you note, whoever did attachment D, thank you very much. Thank you very much, I just like it when you lay it all out there, so I appreciate that. You haven't had a chance, it's riveting, kind of anchors the conversation, it kind of narrows it down. Thank you, Councilmember, Madam Chair, for explaining to us on the revenue side. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, we start talking about the spending side. And of course, thank you for your leadership, Councilmember Musqueta, because I know the elephant in the room is gonna be HSD and the four percent cap. How we work our way through Jumpstart. And what that means, not just for this year, but in the future, as Councilwoman Herbl brought up, so. I'm hoping we can do this in a good way, because I know we want what's best for our city and the Mariners are ahead one zero.
Thank you, Council President, thanks for your optimism and centering us on where we have shared interests. We will convene at two P M, if there's no objection, the Select Budget Committee will recess until two P M. Hearing no objection, we'll see you back then in an hour, bye bye everyone.